Ladies and gentlemen, welcome back. Madam Clerk.
Item 19 is from the Administrative Office to authorize the Chair of the Board to sign the first amended and restated MOU for implementation of the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act in the eastern San Joaquin groundwater basin by supporting formation of the East Side San Joaquin Groundwater Sustainability Agency.
Good afternoon, Brian Moss, Administrative Office. And just as cited in that introduction, this is what we're going to be requesting the Board to do today. On September 16th of 2014, Governor Brown signed three bills into law, bringing the first Sustainable Groundwater Management Act into fruition at the state of California. We also call that SIGMA for short. SIGMA allows for, and we've gone through this before, but as a brief reminder, SIGMA allows for local agencies or a combination of local agencies overlying a groundwater basin to form groundwater sustainability agencies. On May 23rd, the Board took action through resolution declaring their intent to become a GSA under the SIGMA, so Groundwater Sustainability Agency under SIGMA. By taking this action, that really put Calaveras County, bought Calaveras County a seat at the table, if you will, as it applies to what actually happens in the groundwater basin, which I will remind the Board that we're concerned with the 70 square miles that covers the east San Joaquin groundwater basin, okay? That's what has been in the past, that is what has been under Bulletin 118 of Department of Water Resources. It is now going to be a different basin, as we know, called the East Side Basin, which includes not only Calaveras County Water District, the County of Stanislas, and the Rock Creek Water District, but also the County of Calaveras at this point. Those three agencies had initially put together a memorandum of understanding by the June deadline. It was a little late, we got a little, came into the game just a little bit late, to go ahead and agree to form the new groundwater basin. So what has happened since then, since the Board's action on May 23rd, we have been added to, we have been added to the memorandum of understanding. The other option was a JPA, but CCWD, County of Stanislas, Rock Creek Water District, all agreed, just amend the MOU. And that's what you have before you today is the amended MOU, and you can see that there's pretty some, really some minor changes there. But the bottom line is, CCWD went ahead and got this information drafted up, and what I'm asking the Board today to do is to sign on to this memorandum of understanding, at which point the other three agencies will also sign on along with us. So this is the next step in the process. I would remind the Board that we are eventually going to be adopting a groundwater sustainability, groundwater sustainability plans, okay? Our groundwater is managed, how to, how to gain sustainability in our basin. Now, we're kind of in a little bit of an unusual circumstance because really we're a bit more of a source basin, or a source county, we certainly know that. The drawdown in the Central Valley, especially this, the southern, southern valley, is tremendous, and that's just from agricultural production mainly. But the reality is, is we look at our little, our little slice, little slice of this, really we are more source than drawdown. But again, this will be, help maintain the fact that we will great, gain sustainability as a basin and the new East Side groundwater basin. So with that, is there any questions? Are there any questions?
Questions, Mr. Moss?
Well, I would, I would ask Supervisor Mills, since he's our, our water expert on our Board with his background, his, his opinion on this MOU, but I really, before that, would like to point out that I'm totally in favor of this thing because it gives us a seat at the Board, and anybody, anybody that drives Highway 26 from the county line going towards Stockton can certainly see that that groundwater basin is under attack, under, completely under attack by San Joaquin County. And there's even more acreage that's been ripped just recently to add at least several hundred more acres into what's already growing and growing and growing. So this gives us a seat at the Board to where we can at least have some way of, at least attempting to control some of what's going on, because it is immensely, over the last couple of years, is just completely under attack. So I defer to Supervisor Mills and his opinion, since he is our water expert.
Well, to explain, the agreement, the MOU, actually puts us in a special place because our portion of it in Stanislas and Calaveras County are unique. Because we are sources, we're not, we're not the beneficiary of the problem. But the Calaveras County Water District has taken action even 25 years ago to establish 70 monitoring wells within that area for the sole purpose of getting baseline data to prove exactly what our needs and what our demands down there. I've referred to many times over in these meetings to the other agencies, that where are you going to get your water from? You're going to need to supply some type of conjunctive use here into that groundwater as a backfill, and the only place you're going to get it is from a source counties. So the agreements are going to have to come from that, but I would rather that we not do the direct work. And that's why the TAC is probably going to be formed from Stan County and CCWD, because they're the ones that are going to be helping to provide the, the framework by which that transfer takes place, and indeed will be a transfer. So if there's a need in Stan, San Joaquin County, for instance, to backfill for those nut trees that are being planted, they're going to, they're going to have to get it off of our abandoned water, which will probably in the future no longer be abandoned, because we will be selling it to them, rather than abandoning it. We currently abandon about 27,000 acre feet per year on just the Calaveras County watershed alone, Calaveras River watershed alone. That's, that's a tremendous amount of water, which is a financial, could be a financial boon to us if we were able to transfer it and actually have a county make specific use. Right now, it has no specific use, so that's why San Joaquin County has this ability to kind of run unfettered in how they're, they're looking at their land use right now. So I'd just assume the county be a backstop. In other words, if they start to fall apart, or they start to have a problem, that we're there, because the state's going to require us to be there, but we don't be directly involved, other than just being sure to monitor and that everything is flowing as the state is requiring, because this plan has to be in place by 2020.
Correct.
And I'll be meeting with them again tomorrow, tomorrow morning. We're still working out who's going to pay for what, or what kind of, what is the formula that's going to be used on this, this payment? But having it as a combined agency, as we're planning on here, that will divide our share of it up four ways, rather than dividing it up individually, which will, will help us tremendously. So I think we're in the right spot at the right time.
And I just would like to state, just for, for the rest of the Board, Supervisor Mills and I are water people. Conjunctive use, as just a reminder, that's taking surface water and putting it into the ground for storage. And just one last reminder, when you put it into the ground, doesn't make it groundwater. So.
Further questions, Mr. Moss? Public comment?
Good afternoon. Al Segala, Taxpayer Association. It looks like something does need to be done because of the groundwater situation in part of our county. The things that are of some concern is building a new bureaucracy, not knowing, given it power, but not knowing what's the result's going to be. One concern I have is people, people's wells, with this new entity seek to control their wells, or maybe even put meters on them? Another concern I have is the state, in, in some sense, is claiming ownership of the water in our state. Groundwater, rainwater, all the water. But that conflicts with the basic common law, which holds that the water under a person's property is theirs, even if it's moving. And so the state, I understand, allows people to collect rainwater for the purposes of landscape irrigation. But when you have a real problem with water supply, and we have in the past, people have, would have the alternative to use rainwater from the roofs, or even seal some ground and collect water and go directly to storage tanks for domestic use, which could include their gardens and, and their home use. But that's banned right now by, by the state. So we have this cloud that affects people's property rights. I think that, I don't have the answers, I don't know the answers, but I think we need to use caution in establishing a new government organization, make sure there's checks and balances in there to protect the property rights of the citizens of Calaveras County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I, I know I've come to Mr. Moss a couple of times, talking to him about groundwater on one level or another, but I had three questions or points I wanted to make, and I wanted to ask if the area that we're talking about, is there any ground dropping at this point? Is the surface of the land going down? Two, are there any proposals to limit the depth or the number of drilled wells in place? Or is there any thought about limiting the depth or the number of drilled wells? And as Mr. Segala brought up, what about capacity? Is there going to be monitoring of the capacity, how much water personal wells are bringing out of the ground? And finally, does this, do you think, how, how would this, or does this relate at all to the tunnels that are being proposed, being drilled from Northern California to Southern California? What impact would that have on any of this, or all of this?
Brian, do you want me to answer those questions?
Oh, I'd be happy to.
First of all, there is no subsidence within the 70 square miles of Calaveras County. As far as limiting wells, that is going to be part of the GSP. Monitoring capacity is also part of the GSP. The B-Delta Plan and the twin tunnels are in direct conflict with the SIGMA. And so if you look at those two side by side, you're going, one says you can't use it, the other one says you must use it, so decide what you want to do. By the way, we, abandonment of water on the Calaveras alone per year at 27,000 acre feet, the current cost of an acre foot is about 600 feet, or $600. So you could figure that's $16 million worth of water that we just let go every year that could come back into our economy.
And to jump in that a little bit more, especially with Al's comments, no, there's no plans right now to monitor wells, with the exception of commercial wells that are over two acre, two, two acre feet per year.
Or more.
Or more, or more, correct. And so really, that's, that equates, I think, 1.67 gallons per minute or something, if you're pumping 24 hours, 365. So really, you're talking about agricultural use, that kind of thing. It's not your private domestic wells, that's been an issue for a long time. The other thing I'd like to clarify is, when we think about wells in Calaveras County, 90% of them, maybe 80%, are hard rock wells, okay? That's not what we're talking about today. Those tie into fractures and/or the Trisherry River Channel system. What we're talking about today is an alluvial basin type of thing, it's only 70 square miles, where this, where this SIGMA actually applies is only to that area of the county. And again, Supervisor Toofenelli brought up a really great point about, about the agricultural production on the other side of the geopolitical line. So with that said, that actually benefits us. One of the things that Al brought up, and I really liked his example about, you know, collecting water and putting it into a basin. If none of you have had an opportunity to do this, sometime go over to Point Reyes and see what they've done there, when they, they routed the, the rocks and they put little, little collection pipes in, and that's where they got the water for years, from the fog and the rain. So, but again, hard rocks versus alluvial, no, there's not a plan on monitoring people's wells. I will say, small public water systems, yes, under the State Groundwater, State Drinking Water Act, they do monitor the wells for number of gallons pumped, but there's no, there's no, you know, penalty, or there's no, any issue associated with that. So with that said, I could speak all day about this.
Thank you, Mr. Moss.
Thank you.
Mr. Frye?
George Frye. I totally support Supervisor Toofenelli. I don't understand why people can't pronounce his name right, but I support Toofenelli, Supervisor Toofenelli, supporting Supervisor Mills, and of course, Brian Moss, to go forward with all of this. They have all the expertise, and that's all I have to say about it.
Thank you, sir. Further public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the Board. Any further deliberation? Seeing none, not entertain a motion.
So moved, Chair.
Moved by Supervisor Mills.
I'll second.
Seconded by Supervisor Toofenelli. No further public comment? Call for a vote. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, indicate by saying no. Hearing none, motion passes 5-0, unanimous.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Moss. Madam Clerk.
So as stated earlier, we are going to be hearing item 21 prior to item 20. So item 21 is from Public Works to adopt a resolution to incorporate the list of projects funded by SB 1, the Road Repair Accountability Act, into fiscal years 2017-18, Public Works Department Roads and Bridges Division budget.
Thank you.
Mr. Kowalski, how are you this morning, afternoon, I'm sorry, sir.
Doing all right, thank you. As you may recall, this item, no action was taken on this item at the September 26th Board of Supervisors hearing, and in the interim, we convened three informal meetings with individual members of the Board to discuss how the list was developed, how the scoring criteria was applied, and the thinking that Public Works did to come up with the proposed list of projects to submit to the California Transportation Commission in order to be eligible to begin receiving funds in 2018 on this SB 1 legislation. This legislation represents a new gas tax that will begin November, the beginning of November, that will provide a lot of dollars for a number of years for the portion of the program identified for road maintenance and repair. I've brought Mr. Anderson here, my Road Superintendent, if there's any questions for him. The list of projects contained in the Board package that we're bringing forward today is nearly the same as the one we brought prior, with the exception of one small project that was exchanged for another small project, exchanging a project out of District 3 for one in District 5, I believe it is. We discussed a couple of different alternatives in the individual meetings. One alternative was obviously splitting the next year's revenues equally among districts and doing what we could with the monies. Another discussion item was moving forward one priority project, where we have nearly enough money, or 80% of the money, to complete a single project. Or this particular list that we are bringing forward. The thinking is that Public Works needs to come back to the Board, and will need to continually come back to the Board, so that the list of projects can change as our needs are identified, and as more money begins coming in, we can respond to the amount of revenues that we're getting with our prioritized projects. And the Board further asked during these meetings that Public Works comes back with the, a more descriptive methodology, not necessarily methodology, but a more descriptive narrative on how an individual project can be scored within each of the six scoring criteria that were developed. And I think that pretty much is what we had discussed. So the last thing I'd like to say is just to remind the Board of two things. The list, the large list, and then the sublists that we're bringing forward to send off to the CTC, were not developed in a vacuum, they were really developed with the, the staff in mind, the staff who work these roads on a daily basis, from their prioritization. That's number one. And number two, the job for today is really to get a resolution approving a list of projects so that the county can be eligible to begin receiving these revenues in 2018. We are not held to the list of projects. The list of projects can change as often as we want it to, so that there's a great deal of flexibility in this program.
Thank you, Mr. Kowalski. Questions?
Mr. Kowalski, how did you, what was the project that was swapped out? I'm looking at the form you gave us two weeks ago and the one that's in our packet.
For those in television land, your mic wasn't, oh, turned on, Supervisor Toofenelli? The Scott Street project in District 3 was swapped out for McDaniel and Mardson Lane, I believe, down in 5. The Mardson Lane is a $48,000 chip seal, the Scott Street was a $50,000 chip seal.
Mr. Kowalski, in our, last two weeks ago, we met about this, you were going to meet with all the Board of Supervisors members and seek their input, did that happen?
Yes, it did.
And from five meetings, that was the one change that came about?
Three meetings, and that was the substantive change, given three or four possibilities.
Okay. Because nothing that you and I discussed is in here on this. There was no change, there was no project brought to District 2. Your roads crew clearly stated that our greatest risk was losing Jesus, excuse me, Mountain Ranch Road.
River Flat.
Right. River Flat Road, where it comes into Swiss Ranch, and that's our major artery, and we were going to try to move that forward before the winters, and we lost one of our two main arteries in our community. How are we going to get that done?
We're going to do everything we can to protect it with our current funding to get ourselves through this winter. This money would not be available till next spring regardless, so we're going to have to live through this winter with that road at risk the way it is. And yes, we did discuss that, and yes, the roads crews did identify it was the highest priority. It's at a, it's a project that's worth about $1.1 million. Our funding for the first year is at about $820,000, so.
Because I know we had talked about splitting this into five different pots, and we know we can't do the whole project, but we get a bailing wire and duct tape to keep it from falling apart in the interim. I'm really not sure what came out of our meeting, except for my walking out with a certain set of impressions, that obviously didn't make it into the packet.
There wasn't, there wasn't as much support for splitting the, the, the first year's funding into five small pieces. And I have to be careful in terms of what I can share when we're having meetings.
But you got three.
I wasn't listening for necessarily a voter support, I was listening for priorities from the Supervisors and their districts.
Thank you.
Boy, we all want to talk here. How about you, Supervisor Mills? You just jump on in.
Well, I'd just like to reiterate, my point is, is that I believe staff has the best handle on where the priorities need to be. It doesn't matter, make any difference what part of the county it's in, what supervisory district it's in. If, for instance, they suddenly find out that your road becomes a priority, then that's where it has to go. And they have to make those, those on the spot decisions or on the fly decisions, because if they don't make the right decision, it could turn out to be very expensive for us in the long run, having to totally overhaul something that a simple maintenance project would have solved a long time ago. So I would rather that they, they look at this and they decide, where, where can we best apply the money to reduce the risk to the greatest extent? And it doesn't make any difference what part of this county it's sitting in, because we all have to share from that same pot. And I would rather go in that direction than to try to deviate up amongst the districts. I have a lot of projects in here too, but, you know, I'm thinking the embankment failure on Parrot's Ferry Road is a good example, but it's way beyond our capacity to handle right now, and that's just reality. So let's, let's go after the things that we can have the biggest bang with in the shortest term and protect the most amount of our assets in doing so. And that would be my statement.
There, there's also nothing in District 1 on this first priority either, so District 1 and District 2 both, but, you know, there's more funds available later on, let's tackle what we can, in my opinion, here, and as we go forward with SB 1 funding in years to come, hopefully, we have a big enough pot to take care of all these things.
If I could add one thing, I talked, up at RCRCE, I was warned that we should be very careful about counting on money for tomorrow, today, because there is a, there's a movement to have a SB 1 recalled or repealed by ballot initiative this upcoming year. So just, yeah, so let's not gladly pay for a hamburger Tuesday for one today.
Let's not spend the money before we get it.
Further questions, or Mr. Kowalski? Seeing none, any public comment?
When we left for lunch, George Frye, when we left for lunch, walking out the doors, I saw in the parking lot here, in Supervisor Toofenelli's area, the, there's a pothole, and it looks like it could use an overlay. I don't know whether that's the priority or not, but it's certainly something to think about. We've done all the other sprucing up here at Government Center, so maybe that's something we should be thinking about. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Further public comment? Mr. Segala?
Good afternoon again. It seems to me, I'm not an expert on roads, but we should be able to identify the long-term needs of our roads. And some roads can last 20 years, and other ones, less or more, and so we could have a picture of our depreciation. The next thing is priority, which ones are going to have the highest priority? And the next question is, how are you going to get the money from the taxpayers, in the federal, state, or local? And so it seems like, in aviation, you have a thing called the backside of the power curve. You, you go full throttle, and you keep raising your nose. At some point, you, no matter how much more you raise your nose, you're not going to gain any more altitude, you're going to lose altitude, almost like you cut your engine. That's the backside of the power curve. And in repairing roads, of course, we know a patch is least expensive, some, some of our roads are patched almost 100%, but at some point, the cost of repair is more than the cost of replacement. In other words, to rebuild a road, so there'll be no patching for many years, makes sense when you get to a certain level. I think this needs to be identified, if it hasn't been already, and then, and, so, I live in Copperopolis, and I happen to be blessed with some very good work by our Public Works Department in patching the roads, but at some point down the road, they're going to have to be replaced. If we can see what the real... If we can see what the real, the total picture is, then we can plan better, not only for money we want to get from grants, but also how we're going to hit the taxpayers to repair the roads or find some other way of funding them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Further public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Any more board comment or staff comments? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Still move.
Move by Supervisor Clapp.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Toffenelli. No further comment from the public, call for a vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed indicate by saying no.
No.
Motion passes 4-1. Madam Clerk.
So, item 20 is from Public Works, to receive a status report on department's capital improvement project program, including process and funding discussion.
We asked to put this item after the previous one. Previous item was works, repair, and rehabilitation. This is for capital projects, which are fundamentally different than maintenance-type projects. I'm waiting for our PowerPoint to come up. The last time Public Works brought an informational item for the capital improvement program to the board was during the 2009, 2010 budget process. Since then, there have been significant changes and additions to the program with a few removals. So, today's goals, briefly go over a little bit of history, talk about process that we go through to execute, to scope, to identify, to fund, to execute, construct, and close out a capital improvement project, and then to give you a brief status and updates on a few things that have changed with a few of our projects. So, CIP, what is a CIP? Generally, and this is all generally, is a project that has a value of more than $100,000. It will require an environmental document with likely permits, depending on the type of environmental document that is required, but it must comply with CEQA at a minimum and potentially NEPA if there's federal funds involved. Generally, a CIP project will improve a facility. It'll improve road capacity, adding a lane. It will be a brand-new use, and it doesn't become a CIP until we have a minimum amount of funding to at least get through preliminary phase. So this is a flow chart for you. It's, tried to keep it as simple as we could, but starting on the left-hand side, it starts with a statement of purpose and need. So we have a problem that's identified. We evaluate preliminarily potential alternatives, and then we estimate potential costs of what those potential alternatives can be. That initial scoping can take anywhere from three to six months. It's fairly straightforward. It's within our control. We then move into the funding determinations phase, which is the middle portion of this chart, depending on where potential funding could be a match for the project. You could have federal funds, state funds, local funds, or a combination of any of those. Once programming has been identified, obviously, we have to bring the project to the board, either through a budget cycle or through an individual project, to get the board to approve us, expanding money and resources on a given program. Within this determination, the funding can come through our Roads and Bridges annual funds. It can come partially through a general fund, could be a grant, could be annual programs that are available to counties that, say, Caltrans runs, or funding that's available through the COG with the State Transportation Improvement Program or the Regional Transportation Improvement Program. Identifying these funds and moving through this process can be anywhere from three months to one and a half years. The time duration seems to get longer the less control we have and the more outside agencies have input. Moving through the environmental clearance, depending on how difficult that can be, and if there is right-of-way required, can be anywhere from one to two years or longer. If it's environmental clearance, pretty simplified, you don't have endangered species, you don't have a lot of archaeological resources, it can be closer to the one year. If you have all of those things, endangered species, archaeological resources, cultural resources, it can be up to two years. And if there is right-of-way involved, that can be an additional year and a half to acquire right-of-way, to be able to put a project onto that. We then do execution of our in-house or consultant services to design the project. We build the project, we close the project out. That tends to be the easiest and most straightforward of the entire process, and it generally takes six months to a year. Occasionally, it'll have to go across to two winter seasons if we have a limited operating period based on environmental, or we can't, say, pave in the winter in the high country. Next slide. Some of the funding programs that are available for CIPs, if you look at federal, state-funded programs that do require a local match, these are grant, which means that it's competitive statewide, active transportation program, you all have heard a lot about that fairly recently, the highway bridge program, if there is a bridge that meets the criteria for a bridge and it is eligible due to structural deficiency or functional deficiency. A bridge project can be eligible for that. There's a grant program for highway safety improvements that we can go to, and then there's also a bridge preventative maintenance program, but those are more for works projects and not necessarily for a CIP. Local funding, regional transportation improvement programs, local transportation funds, road impact mitigation fee, which is by definition a fund of last resort. It would be for a match. It would be to make a program whole. It would be to help us be competitive in a grant application. And then we have a few benefit basins that are approved throughout the county, some of which are limited in terms of their ability to be spent on projects that, for example, don't exist on a state highway. It would be a state highway project for the benefit of the county. We also have funds for CIP that come to us through the COG. Transportation Improvement Program, High Risk Rural Roads is one that we generally can be competitive at. I've already talked a little bit about the road impact mitigation fees and benefit basin. There's CMAC or congestion mitigation air quality, if you're in a county that does not meet state requirements. There is money for projects that reduce emissions into the air, so those would be projects that encourage more pedestrian use. High priority projects, as well as private partner, private-public partnerships through federal highways. So you can see that there's a variety of programs. Each program comes with its own set of rules, its own matches. One of the programs where we have the majority of our current capital improvement projects is the Highway Bridge Program. Seventeen bridge projects were approved back in 2005, I believe it was, and we have been pushing these through for the last 12 years. Roadwood Flat Bridge is currently in construction. That's what the photograph is of. We currently have one lane of traffic on half of the new bridge. Next year, we're expecting Single Tree to go into construction, potentially Stagecoach and/or potentially Monji. We have some cash flow issues where I don't believe that we can push more than one or two into construction simultaneously. So of those listed there, it'll be potentially one or two, not all three. The Calaveras Creek Bridge is a historic bridge that's in Calaveritas. It's an old trust bridge. We recently modified the programming on that through Caltrans that allowed us to add another alternative, which is to keep the existing bridge in place and strengthen it without damaging its historical character. That was the preference of the locals. It's expensive, but we are moving ahead with it. The Haver Low Water Crossing is one of the last low-water crossings. We have two here in the county under this program, but this program no longer does low-water crossings. We've also applied to Caltrans and received permission recently to replace this low-water crossing with a low-water crossing. Prior alternatives were for a long bridge at this location that didn't really meet the rural character, didn't have full support of the community, so we went for an alternative where we thought we would have more community support. Just a couple of photos of some of the bridges that we've talked about. Single Tree was a crossing that had washed out. It has been closed for a number of years. You can see the trust of the Calaveritas Bridge in the upper right, the Monji Bridge with wooden rails down in, up in Murphy's, I guess I should say, and a photograph of the Haver Low Water Crossing that crosses the north fork of the Calaveras River. This is a continued list of our current active projects. One thing to highlight, the Shad Bridge about in the middle of that list, that was the environmental document that was approved today on consent calendar. So these are all moving along at different stages of completion. Here's a picture of some of those bridges, if you're interested. The lower right is that second low-water crossing in the county at Hook and Dam Road in Supervisor Clapp's district. We have some other capital improvement projects that are a result of successful grant applications. One of them is delineators for major collectors. It's essentially reflective signage that will notify the traveling public when you're approaching curves at night or during the day. Repurposed earmark for sealing of unpaved roads, the current target Six Mile Road that may change. Current capital project, Mountain Ranch Road, Highway 49, that combines a number of funding opportunities or funding sources. It essentially will provide sidewalks from Government Center up to Highway 49, as well as improve the Pope Street intersection. The O'Burns Ferry Left-Hand Turn Lane, recently approved the portion of it for utility relocation. We expect that utility relocation to start within the next month and a half. That will be done by PG&E. Unfortunately, we haven't identified enough funding yet to actually construct the left-hand turn lane, but we will have gotten the utilities out of the way, so there is room to move on with the project. Sign Retro Reflectivity Project is a project for replacing old signs. You can see that stop sign, very old, somewhat damaged. It doesn't reflect well at night, so we have about $180,000 from COG funds to be able to replace a lot of our old signs. West Point Bike Way is a small project. The first part is done around the West Point Elementary School. The second part is getting access down to Main Street from the school. And then at the bottom of the list is one of the largest projects that we have is the wagon trail on Highway Four between Angels and Copperopolis. We also have a few transit projects, or one transit project listed on this CIP. They're funded out of two sources, essentially sources that come through the COG to the county and funding sources that come straight to the county Public Works for either operations or purchase of fleet or capital projects. So you will see the one project that's in the CIP is the Phase Four Bus Shelters. We've done the first three phase, first three series of bus shelters. They weren't on the last CIP, but they have been completed in the interim. There's a picture of a bus shelter down by Vista del Lago, and then I have a couple of transit maintenance projects that are not truly capital improvement projects. One is a system for the buses to be able to track where they are and to be able to provide some emergency communications, as well as to get some lighting at our shelters so that folks feel a little bit safer at night when they're trying to get on our buses. And then we have a series of projects on the Integrated Waste Management Division. You can see the gatehouse, which is substantially complete. We hope to open it and get it transitioned over within the next week. So that one is a completed capital improvement project. We have one for the coming year to get more communications. We have a very limited number of phone lines available to us out there, and it makes our communications difficult. It also makes our computers along the network very slow. Then we have a series of projects that are related to improved processing, as well as safety at our transfer stations and the Rock Creek Facility for green waste handling. And then we have potential unfunded projects. You've been hearing about it, the Valley Springs Elementary School. There's about 22 unconstrained road projects in the RTP. Their total value is currently estimated at around $173 million, so you can understand why they're unconstrained at this point. And then we have a large number of unconstrained bike and pedestrian projects for a value of about $18 million throughout the county, all in the RTP. Now, if any of these projects that are unconstrained seem to fit very closely to a given grant that's available, their mere presence on the RTP gives us the ability to compete for that funding. So, pretty much, it's by need and by funding is the way our capital program seems to work. We have some other unfunded CIP projects or maintenance projects. I have it listed, the Parrot's Ferry Road Repair, where we have an embankment starting to slide, and the road is settling. We repair it fairly regularly. The O'Burns Ferry Bridge, which was a large, large bridge replacement project on the HBP that we deobligated three years ago because there was no method for us to identify the local match, which was about $9.5 million at that point in time. I've discussed the construction portion of the left-hand turn pocket at O'Burns Ferry, and then future phases, the easternmost phases of wagon trail still. We do not have identified funding yet. Action today is to receive the current CIP and the project status, ask any questions you've got, and let me answer them if I can. Future projects, of course, is you will see the RTP, which has traveled through the Council of Governments, and then we're anticipating a COG call for projects in the next month or two, if your constituents are bringing other capital projects that you think we would like to at least get onto an unconstrained list for potential future funding. That's it. Questions?
Supervisor Guaramendi.
Thank you. I was surprised to see we have not seen this list in 10 years, almost 10 years, which is something we should probably not, we should probably do this more regularly. I have a quick question, and this, excuse me, I don't speak engineer, but what is a reversion? There are six bridges on here in June 30, 2018 that go under the title of PE reversion. What does that mean?
It's, what it is, is a milestone that indicates that if funding that has been obligated hasn't been spent in a certain amount of time from the obligation, then that money would revert back to the funding agency. In this case, it would be Caltrans. We have several projects that we have reversion dates coming up on some of the funds, but we do not think that we're at any risk at all. Those monies are being spent, and by the time we get to June of 2018, and actually even before then, we will have spent those funds and moved on to the next phases. So the way, the way that the HBP program works is that you go into a phase. There is obligation for a given phase. As you work through that phase, if you get new obligations, you get new funds. The reversion date is based upon when the funds are obligated. So we could have, for example, on the environmental portion of a bridge replacement project, three different sets of obligations, three different sets of reversion dates. And so, first in is the first expended.
Last, when we first joined, when I first came on the board, we had an item, and I couldn't find it this morning, I apologize, where we gave bridge money back. How is, how does that fit into this? Was that, was that a reversion or what happened?
It was two different things. It was, A, unexpended funds for a phase, and, two, it was a reversion where we, where we had run out of time and there was a little bit of money left on the table. Both of those are fairly low dollar, and it doesn't affect us. We've moved both of those projects into their, their next phase, the next major phase. You're moving from your environmental to your PSNE, which is essentially preparation for construction.
Okay. So you don't, you don't... Okay, so you don't, you're going to, by, by June 30, 2018, for these six bridges, we're not going to be giving money back?
We're not worried about that.
Okay. Thank you.
It doesn't mean that we can slow down.
Further comments? Supervisor Mills.
So, when you're in a particular phase, let's say, for instance, doing your EIRs or your NEPA, CEQA work, is there a time window in which that, once that is completed, that you need to be doing something else and failing to do so, we've got to go back and do another CEQA study or revise or update our NEPA work?
Specific to environmental documents, if we have an approved environmental document, which would be NEPA and CEQA for the Highway Bridge Program, generally, some of the supporting studies within those documents, such as a traffic study, if you can't move into construction with about three years, you might have to do a supplement. You might have to grab and redo a portion of a study before you can move on into construction. But, in general, the approval of the majority, the adoption of a CEQA or a NEPA document or both, those studies are pretty much good until you can actually build the project.
I think, I would echo Supervisor Guerra Mendy's statement about reviewing this more often. This is almost one of those things I'd like to see reviewed as part of a yearly budget that we have this information. We're allocating funds here year over year. We need to know how those are progressing along. There's many of these projects that have been on the list for over six years, correct?
That's correct.
So, so having, having them on the list by itself doesn't mean we're accomplishing anything. It simply means they're on a list. And I'd like to be sure that we are, we're tracking along and we're not in a risk of deallocating projects or causing any funding discrepancies. The other part is on RIM fees. Collecting RIM fees on a specific benefit base in our specific area and then turning around and transferring them to another part of the county is something that I even had to talk about when I ran for CCWD. And so, RIM fees really need to stay within the area in which they're collected because that's where the impact actually occurred. If we're taking that money and we're moving it over to another part of the county where there's no, there's no direct impact that was collected for, that kind of sets the standard here. And I'm, I'm a little concerned as to how we're allocating RIM fees. Is there anything in what we're doing here that might qualify for shop funds that you can think of?
Actually, there's a-
Besides wagon trail?
Besides wagon trail, shop funds are primarily for state highway projects.
Correct.
So, we don't have state highway projects listed in the CIP other than the wagon trail.
Okay. I just wanted to bring that out, that we're going to continue to fight for any shop funds we can find because they will benefit us eventually. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crowvis. Any public comment? Thank you, sir. That was an informational item. Oh, I'm sorry, Bonnie.
I, I just had two thoughts here. Did I hear $180,000 to replace signs? Was that what I heard? What are you going to do with those old signs?
Sell them.
Yeah, I think you should sell them or donate them to Habitat. I think you could recoup a, I don't know how much a new sign costs, reverse, you know, a vintage sign, okay? They're vintage signs now, probably worth more than a new one. Anyway, the last thing I wanted to ask about is the green waste thing. And is there any vision of utilizing green waste in a manner other than just dumping it out there at the dump and the composting idea, the recycling thing? We really need to think about it because we're just going to be producing more waste and waste and waste, and we've got to think of a way to capitalize out of it. So, anyway.
Okay.
For the most part, we recycle the used signs. Recycle, they're made out of aluminum, and we don't really want somebody to put them out on a road or a private road with the implication that they're safe. In terms of the comment about green waste, and I do appreciate Ms. Newman's comments, we already are doing this. We, we have a program for mulch. We have a program where we are using our processed green waste to generate electrical energy. We also have reuse for some of our pine needles and some of our green waste for erosion and sediment control materials. We are not attempting to do any composting at this point in time for two primary reasons. The composting takes a significant amount of water and the regulatory environment is, there's a lot of overhead and a lot of reporting, a lot of difficulty in that. So, it doesn't seem like composting down at that end of the county is, is the best idea at this point in time at least.
Thank you, sir. Further questions of Mr. Crowvis?
Bonnie had a good comment regarding composting. This is Al Sekala, Taxpayer Association. It seems like some of these regulations are not very reasonable. Would it be worthwhile to try to identify, not just environmental impact reports, but also other regulations, to try to identify the ones that are not reasonable and then start the process for modifying those regulations with our state representatives? If you don't, if you don't do anything, you don't say anything, the conditions are continuing. So, it seems to make sense, if they can be identified, to try to correct them for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no more public comment, once again, that was an informational item for that presentation. Thank you, Mr. Crowvis and staff. Madam Quirk.
So, now, we're going to bounce back to Item 16, which is from the Administrative Office to receive a report from staff, CalOES, and local organizations regarding the ongoing butte fire recovery.
Good afternoon again. Brian Moss, Administrative Office. Once again, this is your, your opportunity to gain a little bit of understanding, clarification for what's happening with butte fire recovery. As you know, we've been moving, moving forward very well over the last several months and actually over the last year. So, with that said, I know there's one or two people would like to speak to the board today about this issue.
Mel Knight, Butte Wildfire Community Liaison. Appreciate the opportunity to update you this week, this month, as we're passing the two-year anniversary. Interesting to note, acknowledge that nearly dozen wildfires going on throughout the state. Loss of life, loss of property, pretty significant. And it's, we've been pretty fortunate compared to some of our counterparts. I see Lake County is in for their third consecutive year of dealing with wildfires and very, very tough situation. I am glad to report, though, that we are making progress on the activity that I'm engaged in with Tetra Tech on the duplication of benefits related to insurance reimbursements. We're on schedule, we're within budget, and we're expecting closure of this project within the next 60 to 90 days. In the next two weeks, we expect to be sending out the first round of closure letters, which will go out to literally hundreds of the residents that acknowledge that they have met what obligation they have. We're also negotiating, in final negotiations with four of the larger insurance companies, and we hope to have those resolved in a not-too-distant future. We've collected more than $3 million in duplication of benefit dollars, and we expect by the closure to have collected a little over $4 million. It's a small amount of the nearly $100 million spent by the state and federal agencies, but it represents only those dollars that insurance companies have reimbursed specifically for debris removal, so none of those dollars should have come out of the pocket of any property owners, and that's an important concept. I want to thank Supervisor Guerra Mendy for, for pulling together a meeting where a number of residents were able to share some of their issues and concerns. I want to address two of those because it's a common, a common issue. Documents that include detailed, detailed invoice information, item-by-item expenditures, are available for homeowners upon request. And generally, we did not send those out to all homeowners, but we did send those out to the insurance companies. But some homeowners have expressed interest. If they would like to receive those, we certainly can send those out to them. Also, we have engineers sign off reports that show that the property has cleared by the state engineers, and their walkthrough indicated that there's no, no remaining potentially hazardous materials by their walkthrough at the area related to structural debris removal. That said, they can contact us by using the hotline number 209-221-4807. Or, almost everyone who's involved in this project knows Jeremy Denbo directly, and they can contact Jeremy by the email or any other phone number they've been utilizing there. Or, they can drop by our office, and we'll make copies of those for them. With that, do you have any further questions?
Supervisor Guerra Mendy.
Mel, thank you again for helping us put this program together enormously complex. I hope that we get a chance to reach out to our colleagues on the coast and up in the, up the road a little bit and share with them the lessons we learned as Calaveras and, and Lake County, where the guinea pigs in many cases on this. So, we, we've got some lessons that we could help them guide through. I also want to thank Supervisor Olivera for joining us at that meeting with the community as well as numerous staff that came there. Is, we're almost to the end, but these are the tough ones. And as we put out in that meeting, these, this is, you know, is transitioning from the county, where we've done our duty, to the state, and we really don't know what happens when it goes to the state. But I appreciate Dana Jorgensen from Senator Bigelow's, excuse me, Senator Bigelow and Senator Barial's office, as well as Matt Reed from Congressman Clintox's office for joining us at that meeting as we transition from, from one side of the street to the other side of the street with this project, which I know we're all looking forward to. And it really is uncharted territory. So, thank you for your work, and just to be clear to all our citizens, we are not going to be pursuing you on this. So, we will, we are now standing with you and helping you navigate through the state. So, thank you very much, Mel, for all your work.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. Any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, that was informational. Madam Quirk.
Item 22 is-
I'm, I'm sorry. Was that, I'm sorry, was that the total update on the butte fire?
That was it.
Can I ask some questions?
We'll have to go back to that. We can make that happen. You can ask questions, sir.
Thank you. I have questions about the tree removal. Mr. Crowvis, I let you know we were going to, I was going to be asking these questions, and I didn't realize you weren't presenting on it. What is the status of the tree removal process, particularly the CC trees that are still standing?
The green or white?
White.
White.
Then we'll get green next.
I haven't got all of my data come in yet from our field reviews, but it looks like the majority of those trees were marked on BLM lands. And we are still working with BLM, and I sent you information on that today, for the process to remove those trees, the BLM trees. There may be one or two outliers on it, but until I can actually get those photos and extract their, their georeference locations and forward that up to Tetra Tech, I don't know.
Okay, because I know, I know you and I spoke about this, and there was at least a couple dozen trees that were not, that were one-offs, clearly were not on BLM land because they'd been worked on around them. When can people expect to have those trees taken down? Or are they supposed to get chainsaws out and do it themselves?
The, I, I wished I had an answer for you. I feel ineffective that I don't, I don't know when. We are going to hit the ground again, remobilize to begin removing and treating those trees. In terms of the green marked trees, there has been movement from CalOES in the last week, but there are certainly questions on funding. I will push these as far as we can to get them removed if we have a funding issue or we have a permissive issue, meaning that I don't believe that any white tree falls outside of the environmental documents that we already have permission to remove, so we are free to remove those. The question just becomes on where is the funding going to come from?
Do we have funding for the white trees?
If they sit on BLM land, no. If they're on private property that we, that were initially in the program, yes. If they're on county right-of-way, yes, for the white trees.
And the green trees, you said there were funding questions. What are the questions?
The, the green trees were subsequent trees that we are, that we have asked to be added to the program and evaluated and did not get a lot of response until, as I said, I started getting response from CalOES last week, where they asked questions on those. I provided them answers to their questions. I had a question yesterday that I provided an answer to. So, I'm hoping that CalOES will forward this request up to the FEMA Public Assistance Program, and they can give us an answer that would allow us to proceed.
Have we paid our final invoice to Phillips and Jordan and Tetra Tech on this project?
No, we haven't.
Okay, good. Let's make sure we don't pay that till they finish the job correctly and we've inspected it. Is that good?
That's good.
And what would you like me to tell the citizens who have trees standing on the
If they are private property trees, they have circles on them and they have the wherewithal to lay them down, and they're worried about them being a danger to themselves or the public, they should by all means feel free to lay those down. We will continue to push funding so that we can do it without expense to them beyond what their insurance would cover.
So, we don't have any more money for this project?
We don't have any more money approved.
So, you want me to tell people to cut down their trees with Calvers County CC and white on them?
With a circle around it if it's on their property, that the circle around the marking indicates it's a private property tree.
Because many of these people have been waiting two years to have these trees dropped, and we don't see contractors working out there anymore, so we assume they're gone. That's not going to be a popular, tell them to take care of themselves. People in district are plenty capable of that.
Right.
But, we sort of made a commitment to them that we're going to take care of this.
We made a commitment that we would take care of it within, within the funding that we've, that we have. So, we've taken out $8,500. That's what our funding was for. So, and we are pushing for additional funding for additional trees.
Okay, and you're aware that I'm meeting with BLM on Wednesday?
Yes, I am.
And to talk about easements onto their property?
Yes.
And we're sure about what we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. What is the estimated cost to finish up the trees?
$4 million.
For the CC white trees?
Green.
For green, $4 million. How about for the CC whites that haven't been brought down yet?
I haven't divided them up yet to see which ones are in the program, which ones are on BLM land, so I can't answer that accurately.
Just for the board, since we're using terms you may not be familiar with, each tree was painted a different color. CC circle and white was, was the first cut, a butte cut, butte fire. The green was trees that died subsequent to the fire, maybe related to the fire. That's, that's what we're talking about on the shorthand. Well, winter's coming, so the trees are coming down one way or another. I hope they don't fall on somebody in the county files themselves in a situation of great liability.
I agree. CEO Lutz.
I also wanted to add a little bit on to this piece in defense of kind of where we're at in this process. Unfortunately, this also is going to relate into the next item we have, which is, several, a number of months ago, Public Works put in the request for the change to basically include these additional trees within the approved project scope. And the, the issue really has been a wait-and-see with FEMA to actually make that approval. And in light of the large number of storm activity this year in the beginning of the year for wintertime and then add to it hurricane season and fire season, FEMA has really been looking at these types of projects that have been out there for a while as not priority. It obviously is not what any of us want to hear, which is what we've been trying to make the case to them about. We need to speed up getting those approvals. I met with- I met with Cal OES last Thursday with the hopes of discussing amongst the various issues, these types of matters. How do we get these approvals moved through FEMA, recognizing that the state has limited ability to compel FEMA to respond? But trying to really paint what the local picture is, why there's a dire need, we need to get this done, we need the funds flowing to us locally so we can get these projects because we are at a standstill. And it comes to the point of we either take on the risk, which we can do, but take on the risk that we take them down ourselves, following the guidelines, in hopes that everything will be approved and the additional monies will get allocated by FEMA, with the risk that then we end up having to pay all the county, the county plus the federal portion of those funds.
Well, we definitely, I mean, we've got to...
Supervisor Guerra Mendy, we're kind of blowing into item number 22.
Well, I'm not done with 21.
Okay.
I had more questions.
All right.
That's all right.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, it's been two years. I think that getting a sense of urgency is appropriate. A while ago, where are we at hiring a project manager for the road projects to get these done? Anyone?
I was looking over at my staff to see if the RFP, which I had discussed with staff last week, was supposed to be out the end of last week, and I'm looking over to see since I was in Sacramento.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Bonnie Rich, Administration, Supervisor Guerra Mendy. Assuming you were speaking to the disaster recovery project manager, RFP, that is going to be ready to be released today. I'm just waiting to get a break from Tim so he can sign off on the final document, and then we should have that posted on our public purchase website.
And when will we have a person onboard? When will the RFP do?
Well, once we complete the RFP process, right now, we have it scheduled so that RFP responses will be due on the ninth...
Of?
November, I apologize. And then however long it takes staff, the evaluation committee to review those responses and make a recommendation to the board forward. So late November, early December is when I anticipate we will be back with a recommendation, depending on the number of responses we receive.
And so this firm comes onboard in December or so, comes up with the plan, a couple months to do that, and then we have to find the funding to get this project going by next summer. Is that possible?
Yes.
Okay, because we're, I mean...
Absolutely. We can definitely do it.
I can't flog this enough times. We've been doing this since January, and it's hard to see progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Okay. Madam Clerk, let's go to item number 22, please.
So item 22 is from the administrative office to receive information from the county administrative officer on FEMA funding delays and provide input on recommended actions.
CEO Lutz.
All right, well, I guess piggybacking off the topic of not necessarily great news, I wish I had a better picture to bring to the board today. And I will preface this with this information has been very dynamic in terms of it, we're still kind of fleshing out the details of what this is going to mean locally. We're still weighing the options. At the same time, I felt it very important to get this to the board as soon as possible to begin to have some policy discussion about what options we might have. So for some, a brief snapshot or a history, there was a statewide conference call on September 27th. And through that, it was advised that the reimbursements from FEMA specifically would be delayed for most projects to the tune of two to three years. And specifically what they were looking at within those projects was, and this again occurs across the state of California, the winter storms that we experienced locally here, which was about $6.5 million. And again, this is, that's our local piece. You figure this also includes such large projects as Oroville Dam, down to smaller localized flooding that had disaster declarations. So that is what the primary advice of that call was. However, what is important to note is nothing happens in a vacuum, so to speak. And because of, as Supervisor Guerra Mendy alluded to on the prior item, because there were a number of butte fire-related projects that we didn't have completely approved and allocated through FEMA, that does impact what we estimate for reimbursement on those projects, most primarily the road recovery projects within FEMA. And I know Public Works is here. I thought perhaps the auditor controller might also join us for the discussion. And I also have my staff who can answer questions on this process. But basically, the way that FEMA allocates funds is you have a couple of layers. You have your, obviously, your declared disaster, which then opens the door for the federal funds. You then have within that projects that they will approve, one example being roads. Well, they come in and basically approve then a budget or a dollar amount. That's the issue we're running into on the fire. They approved us up to X dollars. We recognize now that the scope of work for that project is higher than that. We have to go back to them requesting this reversion to make this change. In other instances, we, for the roads, for the public roads, these are the smaller feeders, those we had the discussions with them, recognizing that with disaster recovery, we were having trucks going in and out of that area, tearing up those roads more than they were initially damaged during the fire. What the agreement was is, okay, well, we'll hold off on kind of allocating a dollar amount to those in total until you declare that the other pieces are done to establish what is the total damaged amount. The problem we have then is we're estimating now, and this is Public Works' general estimates, that the cost for those roads is about $8.5 million, whereas the amount that FEMA's approved at this point is $1.9 million. We're asking them to go in and have that revised and changed to reflect that. Where the problem then is, that money needs to be, when FEMA says, okay, we've approved this project for this dollar amount, they've set that money aside, and you have a better opportunity to get that money back in reimbursement when you're submitting your claims. The issue then is we have that gap between that 1.9 and that 8.5, that now we need to go back and ask for that. And it's not in the hopper, it's not been allocated, and it's not a priority, quote unquote, based on what criteria FEMA's using. And FEMA's criteria at this point is risk of life. When you look at some of the recovery from flooding, from hurricanes, they're looking at are what conditions are people living in right now versus if things are stable, that's lower level priority. We have a similar issue on the federally declared roads, which are your larger mountain ranch road, the, I think, Freeco City, and I'm sure Public Works could tell me which other ones are in that larger category. Those we have about, we know that $5 million has been approved for there. We don't expect that they're necessarily going to approve more for us because they've said we just didn't have enough documentation prior to the fire to show that it was damaged so extensively versus normal wear and decline of those roadways. But we also expect those to cost about $8.5 million for total repairs. So what that means for us locally is we have a significant cash flow problem in what would be the intermediate term, two to three-year cash flow. When we built the budget this year, we built it with some receivables built in that expected those to carry over. At this point, we're still reasonably confident that the bulk of those will materialize because those have been, as I kind of alluded to, those two different mechanisms, those have been allocated and funds approved through FEMA, whereas the projects that we're working on now, the road projects, were not included in that. So in one sense, my initial thinking was this was going to create a hole for what we estimated on receivables. In fact, it hasn't, or at least I don't expect that to be the case, so much as our hole's even larger, which is a cash flow problem roughly to the tune of $18 to $20 million when we factor in winter storms, we factor in butte fire recovery, and then we also factor in tree mortality. Although tree mortality is a state program, state funds, no federal funds, there's still likely to be a delay in getting some money from FEMA, I'm sorry, from Cal OES or the state. I had a meeting, as I mentioned in the last item, on October 5th with Cal OES specifically to talk to them about locally, here's the concerns that we have, our significant cash flow challenge. We really need some assurances because we submitted some claims out as far back as May that we were waiting for payment on from the state. And specifically talking about what's the delay in that. Cal OES at this point was not necessarily feeling that there should be a delay, but I would also say I wasn't encouraged because I think we're actually one of the earlier counties having this discussion, but there are other counties that are having this exact discussion of what the funding constraints are going to be. And if the state is floating a bunch of federal dollars, particularly when you look at the tune of Oroville Dam recovery, that I think is about $375 million, somewhere around there is, I think, what the presentation at RCRC said. If they're waiting for those funds, the state itself, I fear, is going to also be having some cash flow issues, which is going to in turn delay reimbursement. Also, the other piece that delays reimbursement at the state level is just the sheer volume of disasters. You add all the flooding from winter, you add a very active fire season. This weekend, obviously, isn't going to help matters at all, where I think the last tally I saw was about 18 different fires that were across Northern California. So all of these factors are then constraining the resources available to Cal OES to process those funds. So even if the state's not in a cash flow issue, they are going to be in a resource issue because they just don't have enough staff. They are adding staff to their recovery team, but again, as we know from government, it takes a while to add staff to get the gears turning. We did reach out also in looking at our options to a number of stakeholders, trying to weigh, okay, what can we do? And this is where I say this situation is fluid, because I would love to come to the board with more discreet, concrete answers today and say, this is what I recommend. But quite honestly, at this point, I don't have a firm recommendation for you because we're testing out avenues. We talked to RCRC in hopes of, are there might, maybe some other counties having this discussion, opportunities to try and look at a concerted, you know, whether it's a short-term borrowing mechanism of some sort that other smaller counties might be entertaining. And we were the first to reach out to RCRC, and they really didn't have many avenues or options available to us. We also talked to Lake County, knowing that they're in a similar situation to us. At this point, they've indicated that they're using some of their fund reserves in order to basically carry cash flow. I had a chance to speak with Mariposa County on Friday, and they're having the same discussion today at their Board of Supervisors on what options there might be available for cash flow. I think this represents a fairly unprecedented situation, I think, for a lot of counties, and I think everyone's trying to grapple with what the options might be. We are working on schedule and meeting with our typical person who would float some of our debt to see if there might be an avenue, but quite honestly, the indication has been with the uncertainty of just some of our grant funds and also general credit rating at this point, given our low cash reserves and other funds. Floating some type of a, some type of a short-term or even a longer term that we pay down early mechanism for debt financing doesn't seem very likely. Something that we are looking at, and we've been fleshing out, starting today when some of the other doors are closing, is looking at internal borrowing within some of our existing funds. And we, it is permissible to use some of our funds that are designated for internal borrowing. The caveat and stipulation is that we do have to pay back what would be the interests, the pooled cash rate within the treasury that those funds would have accrued had they been sitting there. And I look at that because we do carry a number of cash balances within our, within those designated funds. The question would be which ones we could borrow from and what is a reasonable amount for each of those funds. We know, just looking at the reserve account at about $4.5 million, plus the Teeter Fund at about, I think, $7.5 million, that's still not enough, nor would we want to draw those funds down completely to the point that we don't want to be living paycheck to paycheck, so to speak. But we also need to look at what options we have. Some of the more difficult choices could also be really trying to prioritize, do we stagger or phase which projects we do now in order to maintain and keep free cash available for us? Obviously, most pressing butte fire recovery, we're under a very narrow timeline. We have to get those projects done, or we will completely lose those funds. Next to that, though, is prioritizing what winter storm activities we need to do now versus which ones we might have to request an extension on. And then also looking at tree mortality, how aggressively do we want to go into doing those projects when, although it's state money, we might still run into a six to nine-month cash flow problem from the state? From a budget perspective, we also, you know, as a county as a whole, we need to start to look at where can we, if we have large projects, large dollar projects that are in the hopper, that we can put the brakes on. We probably need to start to look at that and say, we probably need to hold off on these rather than have a large cash outlay because we need to keep those funds within a designated fund or where they're at, assuming there's no risk to lose those monies. So I am certain this item will be coming back to the board again. What I wanted to do, though, is have an initial discussion to provide the information to the board, to the public. And then if there's directional requests specifically from the board in terms of avenues that they might want us to look at, like I said, we're trying to kick over every stone, looking at, you know, how might we do this differently? Obviously, we have a lot of declared disasters that we're working with, and we need to make sure that we're providing adequate services to our residents, at the same time, making sure that the county remains financially solvent.
Thank you, CEO Lutz.
And again, I know I have Public Works auditor and my staff here, if anyone has any comments that they wanted to add on that presentation, if I missed something.
So, Tim, what you're saying is that we don't have the cash to float these projects while you're waiting for the reimbursement? waiting for the reimbursement from federates?
Yeah, in the absence of looking at internal borrowing.
And what is, what is the practical application to a project like Butte Fire Roads? I mean, how does that play out? I mean, we've got this person coming, we got this firm coming on to guide us to get the projects lined up. How does this actually play out?
Our experience, and certainly Rebecca can, can correct me if I'm wrong, but our experience has been, unfortunately, some of those expenses come in spurts. It hasn't been as, it hasn't been as smooth as I would like it, and I think part of what we probably need to look at is how we try and smooth that out. A prime example of waiting on certain invoices from the contractors like Tetra Tech, where suddenly we get dropped with a four million dollar invoice, and then the auditor has a immediate cash crunch, whereas if it had been smoothed out, we could probably plan, predict it a little better. I don't know if Rebecca, you might have any other thoughts or comments on that, if that's your experience?
Yeah, definitely the smoother than of the invoices. You know, I think part of the, the problem that we had with the Tetra Tech contract was that they, because of the environmental review that needed to happen, they had to have the GANDA subcontractor, which then put an entire different layer. And GANDA didn't report to Tetra Tech, they were a separate company. And so Tetra Tech didn't have a lot of say in how quickly they could get the information from GANDA. But, you know, it's, you had to start with number one before you moved to number two. So, you know, unfortunately, that's just how that one went out. I think the concern that I have with the Butte Fire, specifically in all of Winter Storm, none of Winter Storm has been obligated, none, not a dollar, nothing, not a penny. And based on the discussion that we had on the statewide call, the priority is really life. So it's category A and category B, permanent work is not even being discussed. And that's, that's a concern that I have. With Butte Fire, with there only being one point nine million dollars of public assistance funds that's been obligated for those non-federal aid roads, and we're talking about eight point five, that other portion, that gap, has not been obligated. So we kind of, we're out on our own at that point. So, you know, the decision to move forward on all of those projects, you just have to understand, we're out on our own. There is no obligation. The, the projects, you know, we're still working through Winter Storm to get those projects approved. That doesn't mean they're going to be obligated. So I feel a lot better having an approved project, even though it's not obligated, you know, there's a very strong likelihood that it would be obligated once Congress can pass appropriations to get the funding in place. Now, it's just when is that going to happen? Is that going to happen in this federal fiscal year? Is it going to happen in the following federal fiscal year? That's just, that's a, that's a, who knows? So at this point, we don't even have an approval on the, on that gap for the Butte Fire Road piece of it. So I mean, I think we have to come up with, you know, what we're comfortable on in moving forward. Certainly, you know, no matter what, if it has to be done, it has to be done. We just have to understand that that's our liability.
It's about ten point one million in unfunded, unobligated, according to Matt, roughly, I came up with. This is a major problem. This is a major problem.
This was a jaw-dropping phone call, yes.
We, we, it blooms off the rose. We had our moment to move quickly, and we did not. And now we're far in arrears. And big fires and hurricanes going on are definitely going to move to the front of the line. I don't, I don't, what are we going to do? Where are we going to get the money to get this done?
Well, my suggestion is that we have a conference call with GFS to look at potential borrowing sources. When I had a conversation with him earlier in the year, it's not promising, but we can have that discussion again and see, you know, what, what he has to say. There, there are options for borrowing, just unfortunately, I don't think there are options for Calaveras County. These, these, you could do grant anticipation notes. These are not a hundred percent grants. They are pretty sure, but no one is, there's not a market for pretty sure. It's, it's got to be a hundred percent. And so we're, it's, it's not necessarily a hundred percent. And unfortunately, this is, this is, you know, very public on what's happening statewide, nationwide. This is a nationwide problem. So this is a crisis that this country has never seen, this many declared emergencies all happening at one time. So California is just one of the states, the, all states that have declarations are going to be under the same constraints.
I think Calen is, I hate to say this, is an option liquidating assets the county may have to get us through this cash flow problem?
I think all options actually need to be looked at for a myriad of reasons. We have a lot of budgetary uncertainties as well as just having to figure out how we're going to fund these emergency situations. So I think everything needs to be on the table. We need to have very clear and frank conversations going forward and start making some prioritization on where, where we move forward.
Do we have, do we have obligation on the tree mortality? And I'm skipping from Butte Fire to tree mortality, but the state's seventy-five percent share, share, is that set aside? Are we sure about that?
The, the state has, has set aside the funds. I think the issue is there's a lot of projects that are buying, and it's going to come down to who's the fastest at implementing and drawing down those funds before they run out of that appropriation. What happens when they do run out of that appropriation, I would say, is an unknown. Politically, it seems likely that they would augment those funds, but at this point, I, I think they have set aside money. It's now the, the race to spend down, and there are a number of counties that are certainly much closer at the go-line or even in the middle of the project than, than we are.
I mean, we're just signing our tree mortality project manager this week.
Yes.
Well, I know Amador and Tooluma are already making claims.
Pardon me?
I know Amador and, and Amador and Tooluma are already making claims against tree mortality funds. We are not making claims at this point, so I'm still awaiting a submitted project under CDAA. So until that happens, we can't, there is, I have no...
I mean, are we just not capable, moving quickly to get things done? Are we missing opportunities?
Supervisor Guerra Mendi, I don't think it's all on us.
Well, I mean...
I mean, I've been in this game for, since the fire started. Unfortunately, the wheels don't turn as fast as we want them to turn when it comes to OES and FEMA. And I understand your frustration.
Other people got it done.
Yes, they did. They got the head start on us.
That's my point. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Calen.
Thank you.
CEO Lutz anymore?
I, I don't have any more at this point, other than to say...
Thank God.
The next step is, the next step is, is pass this piece, really fleshing out what options we might have, and both looking from the borrowing financing route, but also internally discussions with departments on how can we hold off on implementing certain projects if we need to, particularly on some of our capital projects. I think the, the frustrating piece is, I feel, as a county, we've started to make some progress in those areas, and to then stop it is unfortunate, but also at the same time, I don't see any other easy answer or option because we might end up needing those funds for short-term borrowing at this point.
Would it be beneficial if we came back in a week, ten days, for a more clear picture with your suggestions combined with the auditor's suggestions?
I, I think, I mean, next week obviously is going to be very full as it is. I would suggest, yeah, revisiting on October 24.
I think that's a good idea. Supervisor Mills?
I think it's important to understand that our maintenance of efforts really has to be improved if we're going to be sitting on declarations of emergency. OES isn't going to buy the idea that, oh, yeah, we did this. They have to actually say some physical proof that we've done something, or that we're maintaining something. And I think that bore itself out very clearly in these spring storms. Secondly, that projects, maybe we look at some of these projects and say, we're just going to have to accept extensions, that we don't have the wherewithal to do anything with it. So therefore, we're just going to go ahead and do the extensions for right now to keep them in the, keep them in the hopper. But we know full well that we're not going to be funded if they are accepted. So why, why keep pushing forward knowing full well that, first of all, you don't have the funding for it, and secondly, you don't have the manpower to do it. Third, I think that the Tetra Tech cost explosion by itself should have kind of given us a clue as to where things can really go awry. And, you know, it happened, and here we sit. So I would like to recommend possibly that we engage two supervisors in this discussion as well, to just help vet this thing through as, as staff works it out. Maybe we could come up with some ideas.
My only comments to that would be, given one, availability and short timeframe, just being able to make sure that I, if we want to do an ad hoc committee, availability of everybody to be able to meet a couple times to have these discussions, whether it's conference calls with, with GFS or meeting to kind of flesh out ideas or talk to department heads. I'm just kind of worried about timeliness in terms of getting everyone's calendars coordinated.
No, not, not to have them directly involved in every step of the process, but just simply have them involved in the process period. It'd be like herding cats because everybody's busy. But just to have at least two of us in some type of conversation with it.
I, I think maybe we should at least give staff enough time to bring us a picture on the 24th. Maybe we can make a decision of involvement by the board at that time. I mean, just, let's see what we got to be looking at.
One piece that I might ask of the board and go into the point of tree mortality, we've, we are on the cusp. I know TSS is chomping at the bit to get going. And what I would ask the board then is, we had asked them to hold the kickoff meeting until later this week. Is the board comfortable with continuing that timeline, or should we sacrifice the timeline again, but request that they hold off until after the 24th to allow time to come back to the board for suggestions and recommendations?
If I, if I might, you know, I represent a town that almost burned down yesterday that, because of tree mortality. If it hadn't been for the fact that, you know, CAL FIRE had just cut down the trees behind their building, you know, which, which helped stop the fire a bit, I mean, this is a life and safety thing. These trees are going to go up. So I don't know how we in good conscience don't try to move forward, you know? We have to keep moving, in my opinion.
I think CEO Lutz had a question.
And really, it was just informal polling, and if the board is comfortable with that, we will continue on kickoff this week and continue moving forward on the tree mortality project. I would agree, at some point where if we have a lot of these dead trees, they become fuel in the forest and put us at greater risk. Again, I think it's talking about timing and how you stagger the timeline of, of projects, doing them at, at certain points. I just wanted to make sure the board was still comfortable, in light of this information, continuing on doing kickoff this week with the expectation that we're trying to get as much time, trying to get caught up, I guess, for lack of a better term at this point.
Everybody understand?
What was the total amount for that contract? It's like one point nine, one point two, one point two million dollars?
But that's just the project manager?
I understand what the contract was. It had nothing to do with removing with project manager and getting things in line to go, but that's one point one million dollars that we're, we're kicking off to, to start spending. And it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that the money that we've expended on the Butte Fire tree removal, that's not in jeopardy as far as coming back to us. It's any further spending of funds, is that, am I, am I assuming correctly that the money that we were in line, we expended already?
I'm looking at Public Works.
Tetra Tech contracts?
We, yeah, so we still have, I'm looking at what we've spent down to date, and I just looked the other day. So I think we still have about two million dollars left of obligation. So it's that, it's that additional amount for the additional trees.
Additional amount.
The additional removal, yeah, that Jeff had gone over earlier. It's that portion that is above and beyond the twelve million dollars that had been obligated.
Yeah.
That hasn't been obligated.
And, and of, of that amount, how much have, have, we still have outstanding that they haven't reimbursed us on?
We just got, we just got deposits in today, and so for all the, I just submitted, for all the submissions of claims that we've done, prior to the ones that I did last week, we've gotten all the money. So as of today, we just got a big giant check. Yay. So, yay. So, but I just submitted another claim for an additional component related to the tree removal, for hazardous tree removal. So we'll be waiting on that.
That was obligated in our original?
Yep.
For Butte Fire?
For Butte Fire. I can't make any claims for bug tree right now.
Yes, I understand that. So, so we have a one point two million dollar contract that you're, you're wanting to kickoff, and that has nothing to do with removing one tree, it's just getting everything in line, and the project management of when we go into that phase. And we, we don't have a cost estimate for the complete project of tree removal?
That would be the, and that would really be for the cost of actually downing the trees, yeah. This is the cost of mapping, helping to certify that these trees are...
Environmental.
Yes.
If I could, what is the, where we, you know, we have a, if we push off, we have a contractual agreement with CAL FIRE to start that curtain burner a while ago, six, seven months ago. We told them we would have it operational before they came off fire season. Fire season, well, God willing, will end soon. Where are we, and putting it off a week, when are we going to fire that thing up so we hold up our end of the deal? Late though it is, it still checks the box, at the minimum level.
I, I know Brian can speak to this because he's talked to TSS. They wanted to kick it off last week, I think. They were ready to go.
But I know, and they're out of town this week, but are we going to get this thing going?
That is, that was the top priority I gave to TSS. Now, here's the thing that everybody has to remember, is that as far as the reimbursement from CDAA for the curtain burner is, is a different thing than just getting that curtain burner up and running like CAL FIRE was operating it this past winter. So what I mean by that is, in order to get reimbursed through CDAA for tree mortality, you have to have those, those trees identified, GPSed, GIS, et cetera. So if we were to fire up that curtain burner ASAP, which would be the idea, that would be more lines of, we would be incurring that cost. Now, do we have debris to put in there? Absolutely, absolutely we do. Because we have material at Red Hill as an example. There's a lot of material that, that comes down out of the Highway Four corridor, and also your district as well. So there's, there's a couple of different things going on. When CAL FIRE operated that curtain burner last winter, it wasn't under CDAA, it was under CAL FIRE. So the material that was going in there was non-CDAA material, if that makes sense. The ultimate goal is to use a slash from this, from the CDAA-approved trees to run through the curtain burner. But if we want to get that up and running sooner rather than later, which is what we want to do, we won't be reimbursed by CDAA until we have those projects identified, and that's why the project manager through TSS is important.
That could be a long time, but so I would think that to a minimum level, we ought to put something through that.
Right, right.
And that's on us, we're the ones who are late.
That is correct, that is correct.
We messed up, so we...
That is correct, that is correct. And again, that's what I communicated to Tad as well, that the top priority was the curtain burner. So, and he was, he, he's well aware of that, and it was on it.
Just a point, fire season normally ends about the middle of November on average. So that's, that's the window you want to look at?
True.
That's the way we're burning it up now.
Also, one, one other element that TSS will be doing, in addition to the GPSing, they'll be doing the Rite of Entries, the ROE program for, for those trees that are in the right-of-way that can, or end, or can affect the right-of-way.
Thank you, Mr. Boss.
Thank you, Mr. Boss.
Further? Mr. Lutz, any further?
No, thank you.
Supervisor Guromendi?
I've said enough, I think.
This is an informational item. Doesn't require action. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna be taking a 10, 15-minute break for staff before we go further. We are back in session. Madam Clerk.
Item 23 is from the Board of Supervisors to appoint, the appointment of applicants to serve on various committees, commissions, advisory boards, and county service areas. We have one vacancy that we have an application for. It's on the Assessment Appeals Board. The vacancy is for a term expiring September 1st, 2021, and we have one application from S. Guy Puccio, who is the incumbent.
Being from District 3, Mr. Puccio has served on that board in the past, he's the incumbent. I understand that the activity on that board has increased, so I have, I have no comment other than to support the incumbent. Supervisor Mills?
You need a motion, or you wanna move on both?
You and public comment.
Public comment?
Assistant Gallo Tax Fair Association. I served with Guy. He is really great. Just, you couldn't pay somebody to do the talent he has.
Thank you. Further public comment? Seeing none? Do we have just one application? Seeing none, we'll bring you back to the board.
So moved.
Moved by Supervisor Clapp?
Did you have another one, Diane?
Second, I'm sorry.
I think Diane has another applicant for Law Library or something.
Yeah, there's two people who have a Law Library, too.
Sorry, my copy of the memo didn't get updated. Yes, you are correct. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. We also have an application from Stephen Salente for a position on the Law Library.
Supervisor Clapp, would you like to withdraw your motion so we can address both applications?
There's no second? Yeah, I withdraw it.
Okay. Now we can discuss the second applicant. Any discussion on second applicant, Steve Salente? Seeing none? Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Entertain a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Supervisor Clapp to accept both applications.
All second?
Second by Supervisor Toffedelli. No further public comment?
Thanks, George.
I know, they butcher my name. No public comment? Back to the board for a vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed indicate by saying no. Motion carries 5-0, unanimous. Madam Clerk.
Item 24 is from the Planning Department to conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution upholding the Planning Commission's denial of the appeal of the Planning Director's denial of commercial medical cannabis registration 2016-520 for HUIFAM on APN 046-001-015.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ladies and gentlemen, this will be a hearing. The following procedure will be followed. Staff presentation will present first, and will answer the board questions directed to staff. At that time, there'll be a presentation by the appellant or the representative. Then there'll be a presentation by members of the public, and that shall be limited to five minutes per person. That'll be termed a public comment period. Fourth step will be a summation and rebuttal by the appellants with a 15-minute time limit for each appellate, not representative of each appellate. Step five will be a staff summation and rebuttal. Step six, sir rebuttal by members of the public, the second phase of public comment. Step seven will be board questions, and that's questions by the board to anyone, staff, appellant, or public. And then we'll close the appeal hearing, and the board discussion and deliberation. There'll be no questions and answers from the public, and then the board will take a vote. This time, we'll be opening up the hearing. Staff.
Good afternoon to the Board of Supervisors. This is Miguel with the Calaveras County Planning Department. Today, I'm here to present Appeal 2016-520. Excuse me. Just real quick, the subject property is located at 6360 Del Los Angeles Road in Camp Osoco. And essentially, what has happened is that on May 25th of this year, Code Compliance conducted an inspection on the subject parcel. Code Compliance noted that the registrant had applied for a 1,200-square-foot cultivation area. However, during the inspection, they found that the cultivation area was 8,000 square feet, essentially making it 6,200 square feet of over canopy. Code Compliance gave instructions to the appellant to reduce their canopy pursuant to the urgency ordinance, which specifically is 17.95.165.J. And to contact the Planning Department for any clarification or questions. Furthermore, Code Compliance asked the appellants to submit proof within 24 hours that this had been completed. Within 24 hours, the appellant submitted proof to Code Compliance. However, one of the photos that was submitted to Code Compliance showed cannabis plants being loaded onto a moving truck, or a big truck. Code Compliance asked the appellant, what was the ultimate outcome of these plants? The appellant responded that these plants were transported to Sacramento. This turns out to be a violation of the urgency ordinance. The urgency ordinance, 17.95.165.J., says that any instance of over canopy, the excess has to be destroyed. It can't be withheld by the applicant or the landowner, and it can't be transferred to anybody else. And that's the reason why this project was denied. Any questions?
Questions of staff by the board?
In the packet that we have, there was communication from the appellant via an email or some text confirming, he said that he sent it to Sacramento, they transported it to Sacramento.
Correct.
So there is transcribed of his own words from that.
Not only that, but during the Planning Commission hearing, the appellant admitted to, that's what happened.
Further questions of staff by the board? Seeing none? Sir, your name, please?
John Broadaway Valley Springs, Director of the Carrying Aid Collective. I'll try to keep everything short, 'cause I know we ran kinda long today.
Excuse me, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are you the appellant?
Represent HUIFAM in this.
You're not the appellant on the application, then?
No, I do not believe so.
Okay. And you're not an attorney representing?
No, sir.
Okay, counsel? Can you represent in this matter?
So just clarifying, you are not, you are not the registrant, you're not representing the registrant. In what capacity are your, what is your interest in this appeal matter?
I'm the Director of the Carrying Aid Collective, which runs the site, and I have, I thought I submitted written authorization to speak on behalf of HUIFAM for any appeals or any cannabis cultivation matters for Calaveras.
So you actually manage the site?
Correct.
So they are, I'm trying to understand the dynamic here. You manage the site, but you're not the registrant?
No, I'm on the registration for the application for the urgency ordinance.
That's the registrant. So you're the applicant, that you're, your organization applied under the urgency ordinance to get a registration to cultivate under the urgency ordinance?
Correct.
Okay, so then you would be the applicant?
Okay, I apologize.
Or the appellant in this situation?
I apologize. My bad, we went dead again. Do you have a copy of the original application submitted?
Yes, I do.
Can we have a quick, a quick look at that to make sure we're talking apples?
You certainly can.
You got it?
We also have a written statement from the appellant authorizing Mr. Broadaway to represent him.
I understand that. I wanna make sure we're talking to the appellant or the proper representative. Find that out now instead of later on in a court of law.
So the legal, the legal business name of the registration is Carrying Aid Collective, a California nonprofit mutual benefit corporation.
Sir, go ahead and proceed.
Okay, thank you. We moved up to Calaveras in 2015 with the intent of growing commercial cannabis. We had heard that Calaveras was a friendly area. Butte Fire came, everything changed. Emergency ordinance came, everything changed. We worked really hard to try to get into compliance. If you look through the packet that was provided when we appealed with the supervisors, no, I'm sorry, with the Planning Commission, you can see that we put a lot of effort into our property. We're trying to be professional, and we'd like to reflect that in everything that we do. We made a mistake, and it was a really idiotic mistake, and we can admit to that. There's no doubt that we moved plants out when we shouldn't have. If we would've taken the time to either call Miguel or read through the actual ordinance, we would've seen destroy instead of remove. We were all just in a big state of panic with the 24 hours to get everything into compliance, so we rushed and shot ourselves in the foot. I'd like to hope that the board would have a little bit of understanding of that and see that we are trying to be a professional company. We're trying to set the standard in Calaveras and show what cannabis cultivation should look like. We're not bothering anybody, we're not out to maliciously hurt anybody or destroy anything here. We wanna be stewards of the land and take care of everything, and we think that there's a great middle ground for that. So I'm hoping that the board will show some understanding that we made a mistake, and we learn from it. It's not something that's gonna be repeated, and you now have a group with you that will be much, much more careful in regard to everything staying with compliance, and that we would like to stay here and continue with the county growing and prospering, and showing everybody what cannabis can look like in a controlled environment where people are being responsible and accountable for their actions. I'm hoping we don't get our license revoked for a speeding ticket.
Is there any presentation by the public? You're limited to five minutes regarding this matter? Seeing none? Summation and rebuttal by the appellant? Any 15-minute time limit on this? Do you have any further, sir? No. Staff summation and rebuttal? Any sir rebuttal by the members of the public? Board questions? Any board questions?
You have someone in the back, you all want to...
Oh, are you a member of the public?
For clarification, what do you mean presentation from the public? Any public comment?
Yes, yeah, we can, we can do that. Presentation members of the public shall be limited to five minutes per person. Public comment? Mr. McManus? I'm gonna go back and let you have your say.
I don't have a presentation, but I do have a comment. Sorry.
Really?
I was, I took you at your word, and it didn't, didn't work for me. Anyway, this is, I was at the Planning Commission meeting for this, and I don't know if you have the pictures up there or not, but for someone to say they were gonna plant a certain amount, and you've got like a four-section huge nursery building sitting out there, that's usually not something that, they gave you too many parts in the box when you got it, and you just put it together, and that's what you ended up with. That's usually something you do kind of like on purpose. So I think the intent from the beginning was to grow more than what the application was for, whatever the canopy size was. And then after that, when you get caught, you take it to Sacramento. Is that where, when we abate pot growers in Calaveras County, do we take the material to Sacramento? Or do we take it someplace else? We do something with it? Is that the way you properly dispose of excess marijuana? Take it to Sacramento? I don't know. Those are questions that seem kinda odd, and indicates that, and this was, this was a good grower. They had an application in. So I guess I'm confused as how we ended up in this position when they intended to do it right, but apparently they didn't. Anyway, it's just a continuation of what we saw at the Planning Commission, so just thought I'd ask those questions again, make sure I didn't miss anything. And thanks for the time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Any further comments by the public? Seeing none? We'll come back. Any board questions?
All right, one. Go ahead.
Supervisor Guromendi?
Did you have a question?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Speeding ticket, getting your license revoked. Did you, you planted, you had the registration for 1,600 square feet, you planted 6,800 square feet. Why?
We put in two applications. One was the application for the urgency ordinance, another one was an application of intent for the greenhouse. That's the largest structure that you saw. The barn, which is the main one, the 1,600 square feet, which I believe might be 12, that one was going through, everything was okay with that. We had a problem with zoning for the other parcel for the greenhouse. They put us down as, I believe it was M1 or M2, which put us in industrial. They asked, when I called the county, if we were mining or quarrying there. I told them we were not. We were looking to do cannabis at that time, and I believe this was even before the urgency ordinance. Or maybe, it must've been right around the time if I was talking to planning about zoning. So they said, "You have to be in the correct zone, or else if you make your application, you're basically gonna get denied off of zoning. So put in an application of intent, and then try to get the zoning redone." When we asked, "What would be the timeline for getting our zoning redone?", they said, "You should probably expect it to be done after the general plan is done, which has been on the books for a few years now." So basically, they told us not anytime soon. I said, "I can understand that, you guys have a lot going on." But if we get the letter of intent, and at least it shows that we're going in the right direction. We had an inspector come out for the permit for that building a couple weeks before Ms. Davis came out to do the cannabis inspection, and he remarked that we had a beautiful building, it was very well done, and that we should be filling it with plants before everything gets banned and we have to tear it all down. This was laughed at, obviously, until later on, we had a discussion. They decided to move into Phase 2, which was to start populating the greenhouse. And then a couple days later, we had Reba come out, and she dinged us for it. And I told her, you know, "If you would've been out two weeks earlier, it still would've been empty. We had no intentions of even using it at that time. We just had a very, very strong desire to begin using it because of all the money that didn't pour into it." So we pulled the trigger a little bit earlier before we had any kind of approval for it.
Did you submit an application for a zoning change?
Yes, that's, I believe that has gone through, but I don't wanna be quoted on that.
In the M1? Is that the case?
Well, that's for a separate parcel that he's referring to.
Did you pay Measure C tax on 6,800 or 1,600?
For, Measure C is for road mitigation, other taxes.
8,000, excuse me, my bad. I didn't, pardon? How much excise tax did you pay? Did you pay on, what'd you pay?
Whatever the bill came in for is what we paid for everything.
1,600?
Yeah.
That's what you registered for. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it was 12 originally for the barn.
I got a couple questions. You stood up and said that, Broadaway, is that you, Mr. Broadaway?
Perfect.
Yes. Instead, you wanted to show everybody how you are the quintessential grower and so forth, but I'm looking at cultivation site inspection correction lists, and this isn't the only thing that you had violations on. You moved into this and started production, you had no engineering permit for grading, had no letter from an engineer, you had no permit for electrical trenching for the generators, you had no permit for electrical in the barn, no permit for the interior building, no permit for electrical in or on the storing containers, none of that, where you had any permits before you started in production on anything, on any of this, and it was written up in the correction notice. So, and then on top of that, you had 8,000 square foot of canopy when you only registered for 1,200 square foot. for 1,200 square foot. So, I, I just have some problems with that. Those are all building permits that are necessary for any structure before anybody is allowed to even enter into a building. You need a certificate of occupancy and you need to have all this signed off, obtain the permits, go into the building department, fill out the application, submit your plans, have them stamp it and approve, pay your permit fees, and then you go out and you do your construction and during separate phases, you have the inspection come out and sign off that everything was done properly. You didn't do any of that.
You're absolutely correct. The building permits and everything was a giant learning curve for us. The week after that inspection, we jumped on everything and we had inspectors, we had contractors and engineers out for everything. So, we weren't trying to avoid doing it, we just weren't 100% clear on what was the normal process for that.
Perhaps you should have investigated that before you did what you did. I mean, you.
We, we put more eggs in the move basket than we did in the prepare basket.
Mr. Broadaway, I, I'm still confused on the relationship between the registrant and the appellant. Is the landowner Von Fam?
Correct.
And Hugh Fam is a registrant?
Correct, for Carrying Aid Collective.
So, he's the one that registered on the application?
For the.
Is that what I understand?
Yes, he registered on behalf of the corporation.
Does Mr. Broadaway's name appear on the application anywhere?
It doesn't appear in the.
I can't find it in the board packet, so maybe I don't have it.
It doesn't appear in the application per se, but it does appear in the articles of incorporation, I believe, that shows him as one of the directors of the corporation.
Is there a corporation appearing on the application?
Yes.
As a landowner or the applicant?
As the applicant.
Okay, now I have a better understanding. So, Mr. Fam, Hugh Fam, he wasn't the actual grower, if you will, on this property?
Initially, it was him, myself, and one other party.
Okay. And you formed a corporation?
Correct.
Mr. Hugh Fam, another party, and you, right?
Correct.
Okay, I have a better understanding now.
Technically, just to be, be specific, the other party in the initial setup was not part of the corporation when the corporation started. He left right at that same time.
Okay, so he never appears on the corporation documents?
So, he should not, no.
Was that a Randy Lou?
No. Randy Lou should be part of the ownership.
It shows part landowner.
Yes.
Him and Von Fam.
And your relationship with Mr. Fam, the registrant, Mr. Fam, the landowner, was from the beginning of the venture, is that correct?
Correct.
So, you're a three-way corporation, you're going into this venture.
Correct.
Did you purchase the land together?
They purchased it right before I came up. I was in Southern California, just finishing up my classes and coming up before, or basically after all that had happened.
When did you become physically involved with the property, sir?
April 2015.
April of 2015?
Correct.
Were you with the Fams when they applied for the application?
I believe I applied.
You applied?
I believe, oh, no, actually, Randy brought in the paperwork.
Okay.
Yes.
Did you have a chance to thoroughly look over that paperwork?
That was turned in.
That was turned in and before you submitted it?
I helped draft the paperwork, but I did not check what was actually turned in that day. So, if anything changed before it left, after I had worked on it, I wouldn't be aware of that.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Further questions? Okay, we're going to close the appeal hearing now. It's up for board deliberation. Any comments by the board? Supervisor Mills, your light is on. You wish to speak?
Yes. It states in the staff report here, during the planning commission hearing, the appellant explained that he was aware that the cultivation site was over canopy, but in being part of a corporation, the other board members wanted to see a return and therefore voted to continue cultivating at 6,000 square feet above what registered. I don't know what to do with that. If this is the average registrant or applicant that we're dealing with, then our urgency ordinance went way south a long time before you got here. So, I'm very concerned when you use the word steep learning curve. That, that tells me that people are not paying attention to rules or are waiting until somebody catches them at something before they step in to make a correction. And that wasn't the intention of the urgency ordinance either. So, even if you get a driver's license, you agree and accept to operate under those rules and it isn't anybody else's responsibility to know or should have known what those rules were. And so, to me, this is just an out and out refusal to accept responsibility for what the rules were. And that's my comment.
Further comments by the board? Hearing none, entertain a motion?
So moved to deny.
Motion by Supervisor Mills to deny the appeal. Seconded by Supervisor Clapp.
Would you want to comment? No, I was going to second the motion, but my microphone was on, so.
I apologize Supervisor Toffenelli. Your microphone's on, you may second.
I will second.
I will draw Supervisor Clapp second, seconded by Supervisor Toffenelli. Any more public comment? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote from the board. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed indicate by saying no. Motion carries to deny the appeal, 5-0 unanimous. Madam Clerk.
Item 25 is from the Planning Department to conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution upholding the planning commission's denial of the appeal of the planning director's denial of commercial medical cannabis registration 2016-890 for Rocco Rosano on APN 021 005 019.
Okay. You may step forward, sir. Could you identify yourself?
Rocco Rosano.
And you are representing as the appellant?
Uh, yes, and landowner.
And landowner?
Correct.
Okay. Once again, this will be a hearing.
Okay.
Same rules will apply as the previous hearing. Does anybody need to have those rules repeated? Okay, having seen none, we'll open the hearing. Staff, you may begin your presentation.
All right, once more, this is Miguel Conchares with the Planning Department and I'm here to present 2016-890, which is a cannabis cultivation denial. The subject parcel is located at 8850 Avenue A in Mount Ranch. Just real quick, it was denied for two reasons. One of the reasons for denial was the registration was found to be in violation of 17.95.165. And.4a-b of the urgency ordinance. This provision requires that the registrants provide an NOA, a notice of applicability from the water board to the county, or if not, then a evidence of submittal of an NOI, which is a notice of intent from the water board. The applicant did submit an NOI, however, he did not submit all necessary forms and documents that are required by that agency for their purposes. On February 14th, the, what's it called, the water board sent out a, a letter to Mr. Rosano indicating that they were lacking some supplemental information. This information was a biological site assessment and a cultural resources inventory. Basically, this letter said, hey, you're missing these documents, submit them to us as soon as you can. On April 17th, the planning department mailed out a letter with a May 5 deadline to Mr. Rosano saying you need to submit these documents to the water board or prove that you have submitted these documents to the, to the water board. On July 11th, the water board sent out a second notice to Mr. Rosano stating that this was his last opportunity to submit these documents and he had 30 days to comply with them. On August 23rd, the water board finally reached out to the planning department and notified us that one of the documents was submitted. And once more, this was August 23rd, one day before the, his planning commission appeal Moving on, the second reason for denial was failure to meet 17.95.165.115, which basically requires an applicant to submit for a background check with the Calaveras County Sheriff's Department. On September 17th of 2016, the sheriff mailed out a background check packet to Mr. Rosano, to which the sheriff's department never received a response. On March 20th of this year, the sheriff's department sent out a second packet, same, same information, and Mr. Rosano never responded to that either. On April 17th of this year, the planning department mailed out another letter instructing Mr. Rosano to submit for a background check and provide proof of this by May 5th of 2017. As of the date of the denial letter, July 21st, Mr. Rosano had not submitted a, an application for a background check with the Calaveras County Sheriff's Department. And as of the date of the appeal hearing with the planning commission, August 24th, Mr. Rosano had still not yet submitted a, a application for a background check with the sheriff's department. That's basically it for my presentation. If there's any questions?
Thank you, staff. Any questions of staff by the board? Seeing none, we'll have a presentation by the appellate. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, I did turn in my background check to planning and then also the sheriff department.
When and how, by what means, sir?
Let's see. Yeah, I think that's it. Yeah.
On September 21st of 2017.
Yeah.
And it, it was not a background check conducted by the sheriff's department, it was a third-party background check, it seems like.
All right, it's a third-party background check and it's not on the appellate? Is that what you're saying?
It is on the, it is on the appellate. It's, it's, it wasn't conducted by the Calaveras County Sheriff's Department as required by the urgency ordinance.
Okay, all right. So, is that a copy of the background check?
Well, no, because it's information that was not seen by the planning commission.
Was that informa?
It was, I did tell them I was in the process of getting everything, so I don't know if that makes a difference or not.
If you would like to see it.
Not necessary at this point.
Also, I did pay my $22,000 for the 22,000 square feet tax for last year.
Do you have any evidence you'd like to present regarding the state water quality control board?
Uh, I do have, he pretty much, yeah. I contacted them within the timeframe, got everything done. I got my cultural and my biological done. That's pretty much it.
Did you submit that to the planning department? And was that information presented at the planning commission's hearing?
Uh, I, I did tell them I was in process of everything. We just, you booked.
So, that information was not available?
You know what?
At the planning commission's hearing?
I think my biological was in, yeah, biological was in the process. It was already, as he said, with the water board.
Okay, I'll, I'll. Did you receive the results of your biological from the state water quality control board?
Yeah, I did.
And did you present that results to the planning commission?
Um, I don't remember offhand. I don't remember.
Staff, do you have any knowledge of that?
Uh, yes. So, like I said, the day prior to the planning commission hearing on August 23rd, the water board reached out to me specifically and let me, and informed me that Mr. Rosano had submitted one of the required documents as of the 23rd of August, actually exactly on that date, he had submitted one of the, the required documents.
And that information was presented at the planning commission?
That information was presented at the planning commission. There was question as.
I just want to make sure we're able to at least listen to that information, if it was presented as a submittable here.
It was presented in the sense that I informed the planning commission that the water board reached out to me and informed me that he had submitted one of the required documents.
Okay. You may continue, sir. I'm sorry for interrupting.
Okay, um, that's pretty much it. I mean, as of now, I'm in compliance, so.
Okay. Any presentation or public comment from the public? Be a five-minute time limit? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Summation and rebuttal by the appellate. Do you have anything further to say, sir?
Uh, before that, I was in court over a road easement issue, which I did present to them as well. I mean, that kind of threw me off on, you know, focusing on the business, but other than that, that's it.
Okay. Staff summation rebuttal? Any further?
None.
Any sir rebuttal by the member of the public in the second phase of public comment? Seeing none, do we have any board questions to anyone in the appellate or staff? Supervisor Mills?
Yes, sir. I have a question regarding the correction notice that was issued that says 5, I think, 521 of 17. It would be on page 376 of my packet. It goes, finished grading, finished stairs with solid surface, no continuity test on electrical, insulated water line, driveway needs to be brought up to county standards. Has any of that been completed as of today?
I did never received any of that.
Which page was it? I'm sorry.
It's a correction notice that I have in.
From a site inspection?
Well, yeah, it's on page 376 of our packet.
We were never inspected.
I have a picture. Oh, 376, 375, I guess. Correction notice dated, dated May 21st, 17.
Mr. Rosano submitted court documents from his easement issue that got resolved through court. I think that is part of the evidence that came with that, that court decision.
Well, my point is, is that our building inspector went out there on nine, it says 91516, Bob. He made, he made up this correction notice and my question is, has any of this?
Now, I know what you're talking about. Okay, so that's the whole road easement thing. So, my neighbors above me, they needed their move-in certificate or whatnot and that's what they're talking about.
Well, this, this seems to be more than a road easement issue because we're talking about finishing stairs, we're talking about continuity testing and electrical, insulating a water line. That has nothing to do with roads.
Okay, so, they, that's, let me see if I got it in here. I think I do have. Is it an actual, like a?
Driveway needs to be brought up to today's standard.
Yeah, it's a, it's a.
Not ready for finals, what it says.
That's what it is right there, yeah. So, that's for the neighbors up above. The only, the reason they sent that to them is because the road, their road, or my road, their easement goes through my property. And that's what they were given, you know, to fix. So, what I did is I fixed the road and, yeah, that's what that is.
Okay, so that's just part, something that was.
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't want to confuse it.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Further questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
And this is the staff. The appellate just testified a few minutes ago that he thinks he's up, he's up to code now. And in fact, he still does not have a water board permit and he still does not have a background check from the sheriff. Neither one of those does he have. Is that correct?
Actually, no. The water board actually sent me an email on the 22nd of September, indicated that Mr. Rosano had submitted both required documents and basically pending the outcome of this, this hearing, they will decide to continue with them or not.
And that is approximately a year late from the time that they had to get that notice. Is that correct?
A little bit more than a year, yes.
A little bit more than a year, but it was September of 2016, correct, that they were given? And then, this, they were supposed to submit their, for background check in, in May of 2016? Is that, they had until May or June of 2016?
The urgency ordinance doesn't really specify. The urgency ordinance doesn't really specify a date. However, the sheriff's department was sending out letters, and that could be the assumed date. On September seventh of last year, the sheriff's department sent out a letter to Mr. Rosano, so I guess that could construe his, it would be taken as his date of when he had to submit.
And to this day, he still does not have a background check from Calaveras Sheriff's Department?
Uh, to my knowledge, no.
All right. Thank you.
Nice week. Sure. Okay, so I did go, was it called a third-party and get a live scan? So I sent one, I gave it to the sheriff department, and then I also gave one to you guys. I don't know if that's sufficient enough, but.
What was the date of that, sir?
Uh, you get it on there?
The date of the letter that I have is September thirteenth of this year, and it was submitted to-
October thirteenth?
September thirteenth.
September. Of two thousand and seventeen.
Two thousand and seventeenth, yes.
So what did you first have, do you recall when you had the, the request for submitting of your background information?
Uh, I didn't receive that. I, I would've, gotta, gotta done immediately.
Did you apply in person for an application to cultivate marijuana?
I did, yeah.
Did you get that information when you applied for the application?
Um, I don't, do you guys give that out? I don't, I don't think they do about dates.
Maybe you can explain that procedure, sir?
There was a, um, there was a, a timeframe when the sheriff's department actually brought us down packets to hand out to registrants. That was basically the last week of registration, which, um, real quick, let me see what he actually registered.
Why not write?
Take your time.
Not a problem.
He, yeah, so he submitted his application June thirtieth of two thousand and sixteen, so more than likely, but not necessarily, you know, he, he might have gotten one, because we had those packets available and we were handing them out to registrants.
So, as I understand this, he received a pack, a background packet?
I can't, I can't really say a hundred percent that he received one, but there is a really high likelihood that he got it.
Did you receive a background packet, sir?
Uh, I, I, I did, yeah.
Did you fill it out personally?
As soon as I seen it, I filled it out, yeah.
Do you recall when you got that background packet?
No, I was too busy working. I didn't, I can't recall, honestly.
Do you know what date that background packet had to be submitted by?
No.
Was that information listed on the application information?
No.
All right. Do, but you do recall when you submitted that completed background packet to the sheriff's department?
Correct, yeah.
And to the planning department?
It was the same, yeah, I turned it in to them, yeah.
Turned it to these folks or you turned it to sheriff?
I did sheriff first, and I went, walked straight over and-
You made a copy of it?
Uh, they have a copy. Uh, I should have one in there somewhere if I could dig it out.
What I'm asking is, did you submit the same information-
Correct.
-to the planning commission?
Exactly.
That you did to the sheriff's department?
Yes.
And you made a copy of that to submit the original that filled out-
Mm-hmm.
-to the planning department? Is that what happened?
Are you talking about the original? The original I gave to-
I'm talking about, you said you submitted two background packets that were completely filled out.
Uh, one, one, the original I gave to sheriffs, and then I think, I think that was a copy. And then I also did my own personal background checks, because I wanted to know what was on my record, and I gave that to them as well.
And you gave your copy to the planning department?
As well, yeah.
So you don't have a copy?
I have copy, yeah.
Well, you got another copy.
No. Do you want it?
No, I don't need it. I just want to make sure we had same information going to two different places.
Yeah, so.
And is there a problem with the background check, the information you received?
Just to clarify, the only thing that we've received is a letter from the Department of Justice. It was the background check that Mr. Rosano did on his own behalf with DOJ. We do not have anything from the sheriff's department indicating that, that he had submitted the background check packet to them. There's a separate application that's required by the sheriff's department. That was the packet that we handed out with the registration information that needed to be turned into the sheriff. The sheriff was going through sort of the same lengthy paperwork process that all the departments have been going through with this program, in that they were backed up, you know, they only had one person processing these for a while, so they were sort of batching them as they go. And when they realized that they did not have a, a background check package from him, they contacted him, that we don't have it. And he didn't respond. And so I, I recall there were two such letters from the sheriff's department sent to Mr. Rosano saying, "We do not have your background check application packet. Please submit to us." And it was not, was never submitted.
As of today, it hasn't-
As of today-
I do have, sorry.
As of today, I'm not aware of it having been submitted to the sheriff's department.
That was the question I asked, because I didn't see that information in the packet.
The only letter we have is a letter that was submitted to us on September twenty-first, a copy of the Department of Justice letter to Mr. Rosano.
Okay, that's it, this is it right here, proof maybe turning into the sheriff's department?
Sir, did you request your own background check from Department DOJ?
Yeah, as well, I did too.
You did?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, and that's the letter you have in your hand?
This is the one, no, this is the one showing you guys wherever that I turned in my background check to the sheriff over here.
You have a copy of that document? Can you ask what date that was submitted to the sheriff?
Nine twenty-one seventeen.
Okay, so not until twenty-first September of this year?
That is a cop, that's indication that you turned in that background check to the sheriff?
Correct.
Okay, but you didn't turn in the package required for the urgency ordinance for the sheriff to perform-
I turned that in as well.
So it sounds like he turned in, he finally turned in the application packet to the sheriff's department, September seventeenth of this year, after the application had been denied and after the planning commission had denied his appeal.
I'd like to point, oh-
Is that correct, sir?
Can you tell me that again, sorry?
Can't incriminate yourself and not charge it with a crime. But is that, is that statement correct?
I, I, can you repeat that?
What I said was, you submitted the application for background check to the sheriff's department on September-
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first. After your application had been denied and after the planning commission had denied your appeal.
Correct, but I would like to say I did let them know that I was turning everything in, so.
Thank you. Supervisor Mills?
Yeah, my question is, is that, did you review the application that you needed to complete with the water board to, that constituted a complete application? They had a deadline of September seventh, so it was on you as the applicant to be sure that all of the requirements for that application were met, correct?
Okay, um, on this second notice here-
I'm not talking about the second notice. I'm talking about the very first time that you turned in an application to the water board. On that application, there was some, some specific requirements that you had to meet. And it, it seems like it waited until there was a notice from them in February of this year, saying that the application was incomplete.
Uh, you know, I turned in the ten grand, and then I, I thought it was clear, but, you know, and I went straight to work, and I did get these in the mail, in which I did respond in time.
Okay.
Further questions by the board? This time I'll close the hearing. Oh, I'll, I'll, with the opportunity for public comment, I'll open the hearing back up. Know any public comment? Thank you. I'll close the hearing again. I'm gonna wear this hammer out. We'll be back to the board now for a discussion and deliberation. Any comments? Seeing none, entertain a motion? Move by Supervisor Guaramendi?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Toffenelli. Any public comment? Seeing none, call for a vote. All in favor of upholding the appeal by the planning commission, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, denying the appeal, indicate by saying no. Motion carries five zero unanimous. Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
So this would be a time that we would continue any public comments that were not heard this morning.
Actually, Bonnie Newman from Double Springs. I have a whole list, as long as my arm, of topics I'd like to address with this forum here. I think I'll do something simple, because it's been a long day, and I don't want to offend anybody, more than I usually do. I'm gonna revert back to my topic that I brought up last time, and it's about littering in Calaveras County, the roadways, the highways. I told you I'd give you some ideas that wouldn't cost you anything, but I, I think I need to ask you to put up a, a little bit of something here. I'd like you all to consider a campaign that you could kick off perhaps three times a year to involve the community in doing a massive keep Calaveras clean campaign, litter pickup day. I'm noticing the times that the litter really piles up, and I, and I have to confess, I probably, I think it's probably coming from our recreational areas. I'm proposing the first weekend in May, the first weekend in August, and the first weekend in November, to either publicize, encourage community organizations to get involved, or reach into your deep pockets and come up with some keep Calaveras clean, pick up litter signs that we could install in different places. I know it's probably dumb to think that we could put up some trash cans in different places where the litter piles up, because people steal the trash cans. I'm just really discouraged, because I've been out picking litter from Double Springs to Lime Kiln, and it's only about a mile long for over a month now. Every time I go back, somebody just thrown a bag of litter out their car. Household trash, diapers. It's really discouraging. Civic pride is important, and we think we have a county that will encourage people and tourists to come. I'm accusing them of being the ones that doing the most of the litter, but we need them to come here to spend their money, so why don't we try and keep our county clean? Sponsor litter cleanup, encourage community service organizations to get involved, and if you have to, they can get their names that Caltrans put on little signs everywhere, but I think it's an anonymous kind of effort that we all need to put forth. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further public comment?
Al Segala, this refers to the cannabis issue and our-
Excuse me, Mr. Segal. This is your first time for public comment, general public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, it's been a long day.
I missed the first round.
Okay, all right.
The Taxpayer Association doesn't take a position on a ban ordinance, because some are directors, or, or for that, and the other ones are opposed. So these comments are coming from myself, just as a concerned citizen.
Okay.
And I've taken the time to read the ordinance that Matt Clark previously gave you earlier today. And my thoughts are, the, the, the important thing is the protection of everybody's rights, growers, and neighbors, and everybody, okay? If, if that, if we keep that as our goal, then the constitutional protections apply to everybody. Nobody's exempt. And so this regulatory ordinance that was put together by Matt Clark is very extensive, almost to the borderline of being oppressive. The, the, one of the important things that I, that it deviates from, the recommendations from the planning commission, is a period of time under our zoning for people to remove their, their outdoor grows and, and to relocate to another area. Planning, the planning department recommended ninety days, and Clark recommendation is five years. I imagine reason would be somewhere in between. The, the, I guess the main point of what I'm saying is that, uh, the, the recommendations for this regulatory ordinance do seem to make sense, and it's worthy of your analysis and, and debate. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Further public comment? Madam Clerk?
Supervisor announcements. In compliance with AB one-two-three-four, chaptered as Government Code Section five-three-two-three-two dot three D, board members shall provide brief reports on meetings they attended at the expense of the local agency at the next regular meeting of the legislative body. This report is required to include meetings attended for which there has been expense reimbursement, mileage, meals, lodging, et cetera, but may also, at the board member's discretion, include any other meeting attended by the supervisor on behalf of the county.
Who would like to go first? Supervisor Toffenelli?
Were you lobbying? Is that what you were doing?
No, I, I want to make sure-
I talked to Supervisor Mills. The only thing I have to report is, I will be traveling to San Diego on the, immediately after the twenty-fourth meeting for the LAFCO conference, which will be Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of this month.
Okay. Supervisor Platt?
Yeah, I attended the East Bay Mud luncheon, it was great. Seen all you folks there. Mr. Supervisor Toffenelli wasn't there. I attended the hospital, I guess, health fair, and that was about it.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Mills?
I attended the health fair, but I didn't write it down. Uh, September twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, attended the RCRC annual meeting. Great discussions with supervisors from other counties and representatives from the state legislature and Congress. Found many issues facing rural counties to be the same, but approaches to solutions are radically different in some cases. Political will is more important than emotion on these issues. Fact finding already done by other counties could be helpful here. September thirtieth, attended Peninsula Estates Homeowners Association meeting in Copperopolis. Listened to their priorities, updated them on some projects. October second, met with constituents as part of ACVA, recording a message of the visitors bureau and how business can avoid having to join every organization in the county in hopes of finding one that will give them a return on investment. Uh, October third, coffee talk Tuesday. Destination Angels Camp did an update on the Wild West Fest that is coming up Saturday, October twenty-first, in Angels Camp. DAC and ACBA are putting together a social media constant contact class. ACBA will be first, but space will, may be available for the public. And we were told about McCullough Hill having a November fall mall, uh, date to be announced. So I don't know what's going on with that, but it's gonna be in November. October fourth, good morning Calaveras, where Nate McBride explained the efforts of small business assistance in the county. And attended CCWD and CPUD joint board meeting to hear discussions on the McCullough River Long-Term Water Needs Study, which developed data to support the Office of Finance Population Growth Numbers on future water demand in the watershed. October fifth, hosted the Highway Four Working Group meeting in Murphy's. Majority of the discussions surrounded roads and tree mortality issues primarily in the Arnold area. Updated on the WIN Act, a project CCWD is developing to support storage at New Maloney's for Water. That's a two-hundred-thousand acre foot storage that they're working on, and also some challenges with long-term water rights. Attended Calaveras Foothills Fire Safe Council same evening. Reviewed the SRA door-to-door chipper program, PG&E seniors and chipper program, and the tree mortality cost share program. The Murphy's Fire Break has been turned over to the Resource Conservation District to make it their first administrative project working with CalFire. That's a big deal. That'll give them a start. Next rounds of grants for CDAA will be expected in November, and they're lining up projects now. And October sixth, attended East Bay Mud BBQ. And October seventh, attended lumberjack days in West Point as a participant on the Calaveras Animal Disaster Shelter float to raise awareness of the group for helping animals during emergencies. And so I have-
Supervisor Mills? Supervisor Guaramendi?
Thank you very much.
Microphone?
Thank you very much. First off, I want to point out that AB 1234 says we're required to report out on meetings that we're expensed by this county, or that we charge for mileage, or paid rent to go, or tuition to go to, and any other meetings are at our discretion. I know that, I'm sure you're all aware that that's been a complaint against me recently, but I want to make sure that you guys understand that I was not required to report out on the Fish and Game Commission meeting, which I am a liaison to, not a member of. That said, I did attend the meeting on the 23rd. We were addressed by California Department of Fish and Wildlife staff. They did not have a formal presentation, nor did they have handouts. But, and my primary concern during this was, of all the great work and concerns that they have about cannabis in Calaveras County, are we going to remain funded, and will they have enforcement dollars, if we become a banned county under Proposition 64? I followed up, and I do not still have an answer to that question. I attended, and this is required one, I attended the RCRC meeting up in Tahoe, as Supervisor Mills pointed out. It was a good meeting, we covered lots of stuff, from rural development to opioid epidemic, current and future legislative issues that we'd be able to, that we need to think about. And as I mentioned earlier in this meeting, I was cautioned about the use of SB 1 funds. I attended the UMRRA two-day meeting. We spent day one talking about strategies and where we wanted to go as a board, and the second was a short business meeting, followed by the lunch that, I believe, well, the four of us attended. Oh, we didn't talk or meet together. So we're good on that. I would like to poll the board with the Chair's Commission, though, on one issue that we have coming up. We have a, two ordinance is coming to this board next week. A ban and a, and a regulatory ordinance on cannabis. My understanding is that the regulatory ordinance on cannabis is not written out, rather, it's in bullet form, as put forward, and I wanted to poll this board on, the Planning Department is working, under the strict direction of this board, to do nothing but work on the ban ordinance. And I wanted to poll this board to see if there was interest in this interviewing week to actually flesh out the regulatory ordinance, so we have something of substance to speak about and specifics to compare. So with the board, with the Chair's permission, I would like to see where we are on that, to give direction to staff and preparation for that meeting.
You have Chair's permission to poll the board?
So I would, I would like to, I would like to see if there's other interest in having the staff put the time into fleshing that ordinance out, so we have something, so we have two documents to compare.
We'll start with Supervisor Clapp? I'm gonna ask that. Use your mics, gentlemen, so we can get it recorded.
No.
Okay, Supervisor Mills?
No.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
No.
Supervisor Guaramendi?
Yes.
Supervisor Olivera, I would affirm, yes. The poll is in favor of hearing the ban ordinance only. Am I correct, counsel? Is that in your interpretation?
No, my, yeah, my, my understanding of the poll was whether staff was to draft a regulatory ordinance or not to be considered next week. The recommendation of the Planning Commission would be coming forward, the same as is right now, the Planning Commission's direction to staff would be to bring forward the ban ordinance, and then bull, essentially bullet points of a proposed alternative regulatory program. That is what staff has been working on. We have not been working on a formal draft regulatory program pursuant to those bullet point, um, policy recommendations at this point.
Right. I wanted to flush that out, make sure we understood the policy implications, the financial implications. That regulation would be, since clearly we know that a ban, we know what the financial implications are of that, gentlemen. And we'll talk about that more next week.
Chair, I think before we do too, is we may want to discuss if the meeting should be extended beyond the 17th. What other date would we consider as an option for staff? Because I do not want to be abusing staff by having you here till seven, eight, nine, 10, 11 o'clock at night on the 17th, trying to get this finished.
I would agree.
I would rather see us split it up into a second meeting and carry it forward if it's necessary.
Right now, we are scheduled for the 17th of October, that's Tuesday, for the board meeting. And if we...
I'd like to be sure everybody's here. I mean, whatever it is, if I'm here.
Have I heard anybody not being able to make the regular board meeting starting at nine o'clock? Or we may have a gender review starting a closed session.
So my understanding is, is that the meeting on the 17th is a special meeting? And if you would like to continue that meeting to a different day? That's what you're asking?
Correct.
If we need to.
If needed.
I intend to go until five o'clock on that meeting, seeing that's a special meeting. At five o'clock, we'd be looking at a continuance to a time later that week. I understand that Wednesday is a bad day due to some scheduling conflicts. I also understand that Friday is a bad day due to a scheduling conflict you have, Supervisor Mills?
Yeah, I'll be at Mountain Counties in Folsom.
Okay. The 19th?
I do have a question about the following day, Wednesday. Supposed to be Assessment Appeals Board meeting here, on that day here. However, is there, is there a cannabis appeals meeting in the smaller...
Yes.
courtroom on the same day?
So since this was briefly mentioned this morning, I did work throughout the day to find a meeting location for the Assessment Appeals Board. I never heard back regarding the availability of the Hearing Board room. However, I was able to book the Sheriff's Community Room for the Assessment Appeals Board. And we have rescheduled the COG-TAC meeting to take place that day, which would have been next door. We have moved them to the COG offices. So as far as meeting location, this room is available on Wednesday, the 18th. You would have a different clerk, I believe, because I need to clerk the Assessment Appeals Board meeting. Susan is not available on the 18th, but I think that there is a backup, if I'm not mistaken. So if those are the reasons that you would try to select a different date, I think we have kind of covered all the bases for the 18th.
Prefer the 18th if we... Would the 18th?
Keep it continuous.
You know, one of, one of the things to consider is if we, if we went for the next day, if we went into two days, I'm assuming it would be because we had questions and needed further clarification. Putting a day in between could give the staff chance to come up with the work that we might be requesting, or not. I mean, I could do either day. I'm just trying to figure out how to get...
I left the whole week open, so I'm, because of not knowing. So either day. Thursday, is this room booked for Thursday? The 19th?
Yeah, it is Planning Commission.
It's the Planning Commission.
So Wednesday is out?
No.
No.
I'm sorry, it is not the Planning Commission the next day. That's not a Planning Commission week, the Planning Commission in the month of October, to my understanding, meets on the 12th, which is this Thursday, and then on the 26th. So that is not a Planning Commission day. You will have another clerk. I won't be available that day, the 19th.
Wednesday is good for me. The A take, if we have to go again? Good for you? Supervisor Clapp? Supervisor Toffenelli? Supervisor Guaramendi?
I'll make it work.
We'll make it Wednesday, then, if we need to. Any other issue? Before I report out, I want to acknowledge and recognize Chief Josh White. Chief came over to give us an update on the current fire situation. Welcome, Chief. Thank you for coming over and taking time out of your busy schedule.
Good afternoon, thank you very much, and I apologize that I wasn't here earlier. I just wanted to give you an update on the Point Fire, 130 acres up out of West Point. Unfortunately, it burned four residential structures, as well as about 14 outbuildings, and damaged a number of other residential and outbuildings. So, uh, the fire's 50% contained. We don't see any additional progression of the fire. I don't expect it to grow any larger than 130 acres. Think we have that contained, and if you look at a statewide basis, I'm really pleased with the progress that we were able to make in that first night. What we're seeing statewide is, one of those things that we see during the Santa Ana wind events, except we're seeing it in Northern California instead of Southern California. Napa County, Sonoma County, Nevada County, Lake County, as well as even portions of Marin County are being impacted by these significant fires. Overall, I think that they have 13 fires burning in Northern California. CAL FIRE has initiated four incident management teams within a period of about six hours yesterday. Wow. I've never heard of that. It's surprising to see two incident management teams initiated in just one 24-hour period for us to mobilize all four out of the six teams that we have statewide for these incidents is, is something to really speak to as far as the kind of situation that we're dealing with over there. I would like to commend the Calaveras Sheriff's Office. One sergeant and one deputy notified 72 different homes. Were able to go out and knock and notice, and get these people evacuated out in front of this fire that we had on the Point Fire. What a phenomenal effort, and what they were doing in those kind of conditions, middle of the night, waking people up, getting them notified, and then moving on and getting to the next house. Very impressive, and I would just like to recognize the Calaveras Sheriff's Office, their appreciate, our appreciation for the work that they did, as well as all of our other local government fire agencies that helped to respond. We actually have a strike team from Yolo County that actually came down and helped us out. We have other engines, you know, obviously from throughout the districts, from throughout Calaveras County, as well as Dewome County.
Doing a good job, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Keep it up. We need you.
Chief, I want to just commend you and, and your crews as well. I mean, you guys were really great out there, and I appreciate the communication that came and the homes that you were able to save, and it was a pretty scary situation, that could have gone really bad. I mean, it wasn't good, but it could have. My concern is, with all the fires going on in the state, I'm sure everybody's getting pulled nine ways to Sunday. We have adequate coverage in case we're next on the list?
We do, and that's one of the things that, while we still have a lot of work left to do up on the Point Fire, we do have those resources that if we needed to in a pinch, to be able to pull them off. But every one of our firehouses are currently staffed. We also have the local districts, that partnership that we have with our local districts is just phenomenal, so that it's all one team when any fire kicks off. So we do have great coverage throughout the county.
Thank you, and express our gratitude to your, to your men and women as well.
We will do that, thank you.
Could you please clarify, is it 30,000 acres burned? Is that what you said?
Oh, I don't...
For Point Fire?
Oh, no. So the Point Fire was 130 acres.
Thank you.
Yes.
Got all kinds of numbers going.
No, 130 acres.
Do we have a cause?
Nothing right now. It's still under investigation, and I just want to make sure that our investigators have that chance to, to get everything dialed in before we announce it.
Well, thank you very much, you and your team.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you, Chief.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay. Having nothing further, my turn to report out. Soon as I find out where I'm at. On Wednesday, I attended the Chamber breakfast at MTH, put on by, of course, Chamber Commerce, and had some very interesting information disseminated. I tried to make that breakfast, I believe Supervisor Mills also attended. Attended the October 10th meeting, a gender review, with our admin and our clerk. Attended a CIP discussion mentioned earlier for Districts 3 and 4 with Public Works Director Crowbus, and also with Supervisor Mills. And also attended the COG meeting, filling in for a last-minute request from Supervisor Mills for a personal reason, and I'm not gonna go into it, but I think he owes me for it. Forty-eight years, yeah, okay. I attended the East Bay Mud Party BBQ with Supervisor Guaramendi, Supervisor Mills, Supervisor Clapp. And once again, it was a, a very informative, had representation from several agents. No, we did not discuss any equipment, it was a social event.
I wasn't there, so I don't know.
Well, then quit yelling out Brown Act. And I did participate in the Grape Stomp, not as a grape stomper, but I was requested by the committees to award their grand prize, which I thought was very interesting, a trip to Australia or New Zealand, a choice. And that was won by one of our people in, in Murphy's, by the way. And last night, I attended the GABA meeting, Greater Arnold Business Association, and was quite pleasantly surprised to see the new developments at Bear Valley Resort. They are, right now, working on a master six-person chairlift. They put in several new amenities there up at Bear Valley. They have a glamping program, which is a new program they started, that you get to go up there and spend the night in the mountains in a tent that has a cement floor with a real bed and furniture and real electricity. It's kind of a glamour way to camp, and apparently very successful. I think they have 15 tents up there now. They're planning on expanding that to eight more tents for the next summer season. They're putting in some more zip lines, some more bridges and stuff for kids for summer activities. And apparently, this year is gonna be a stellar year, providing we get the snow we had last year, or even part of it. And Bear Valley has really ramped up. I will be going up there, taking a tour, both at the end of this season, the summer season, and I'll be participating, hopefully, in their opening, opening day on November 28th for the snow season, so. That's all I have. It's been fun. Anybody else?
Staff.
Staff. Nothing to report? With that, meeting is adjourned.